I know it's 5:31, but I think we'll give it just another minute if that's okay.
Looks like we have about 10 of our commissioners so far, Chair Bame.
But since we're at 5:32, let's go ahead and get started then. So noting the time is still 5:32, I'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us, especially members of the public, but also my fellow commissioners, for the regular meeting of the County San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. Before we turn to the clerk, I'd like to make a couple of brief notes about today's meeting. First, as some of you know, Barbara Jimenez will not be attending or joining us today. Fortunately, Liberty Donnelly, our IRC co-project manager, is here as usual and will act on Barbara's behalf to address any questions for staff. At this time, Liberty has a couple of brief comments, I think, about a new feature that we've just mentioned for virtual meetings, as well as about where things stand with regard to the future of in-person meetings. With that introduction, Liberty, please.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Bame. Good evening, commissioners. You may have noticed that we do have a new feature for virtual meetings. So we did enable the live closed captioning. This is the text that appears at the bottom of the screen, and it's describing everything I'm saying right now in real time. We are piloting this feature, as Erin mentioned, tonight because it is helpful for some attendees who are very visual subtitles. For me, I do tend to read subtitles and have those captioning. But some, however, may find it pretty distracting. So if you would like to turn off the text display or adjust the settings, you can do so by clicking the CC Live Transcript button in Zoom, and the staff have put it up here. It's fairly easy to turn on and off. And I will give everyone a few seconds to take a look and make any adjustments before we get started. And then also, if you find that this feature is more of a distraction as a commission than it is helpful, we are free, you know, feel free to provide us any feedback, and we can always take, remove the feature. It's very easy. It's just a button that we turn on and off. But the nice thing is that you can also turn it on and off if you'd like. But just let us know, and we'll just kind of pilot it and see how it goes. Okay, you can turn that off, Porsha. Thank you. So for in-person meetings, in regards to all of our open meetings, I know many of you have already voiced in the past, like, when are we going to open them up? Andrew has said it. Everyone has said it. And so it's a great question, and many jurisdictions and commissioners are actually having those discussions. Many are kind of waiting to see if there's any formal guidance on how to do this, and many are also waiting to see how the Board of Supervisors will be handling it. And at the county, at the next Board of Supervisor meeting on May 4th, they are going to be trying a hybrid version of this open meeting model. As you can understand, there's multiple logistics that need to be figured out with spacing, including just having the supervisors, like, can they be on the podium? The spacing in the audience, and there's quite a few staff that participate in the meetings, just even handling the normal internal staffing, and then how people enter the building, just a variety of just different logistics. So the county is kind of preparing for that. Erin and Andrew will make, definitely Andrew, because maybe not Erin. But with that being said, many of us are having conversations, and I think it would be nice to start planning what you all visualize on what you would like for the open meetings. We will have plenty of time to do it, but it's good to have these conversations now, start visualizing it, because even with some early conversations, we just started, what about this? What about that? And do we do a hybrid? And all of these different things that can come up. So what we were thinking is that at the next meeting, Barbara can give an update on how the meeting goes on May 4th and at the Board of Supervisors, and then we can share, you know, lessons learned or anything that we thought were good tips. And then as we near, you know, things starting to open up, I know June 15th is the date that it's supposed to happen, but there's a lot of non-pharmalytical interventions, that's what they've been saying, that we may still put together, and many city councils are, may open, but their commissions may start later. So we kind of just want to feel it out. So during the interim, if you have any ideas or if you participated in anything that you think would be helpful for staff to kind of review, please send it our way, and we will start capturing that information. And at the next meeting, we will provide another update on how the Board of Supervisor meeting went. And with that, I'll turn it back to Chair Bame.
Thanks very much, Liberty. And I do want to encourage commissioners myself to please send any ideas, thoughts, comments, reactions on that, and in both categories, at least in the way I think about this, both in terms of what would serve us and concerns you have and connectivity and whether we're doing a hybrid simultaneous meetings, but also any thoughts on what would make the meetings accessible to members of the public, both those who want to see and attend in-person meetings, as well as those who might not be comfortable doing so, but still want to participate. So any and all thoughts on that, I know staff would appreciate, and I think it would just help our discussion next time around. With that, another introductory note. My script says it is with mixed feelings, but these aren't mixed feelings. This is really deep regret that this is the last IRC meeting for our current clerk, Erin Demarest. Erin's being promoted within the county, so it's for the right reasons, but her new responsibilities don't involve redistricting any longer. Before I start rambling about Erin and all the great things, let me turn to Andrew Potter. Welcome back. It's great to have you here again. I won't repeat what we've said before, but I would ask Andrew to introduce Erin's successor, please.
Thank you, Chair Bame. As you indicated, Assistant Clerk of the Board Erin Demarest has accepted a fantastic position with the county's Land, Use and Environment Group as the Chief of Staff, leading major initiatives in the group and coordinating activities for all the departments within that group. Today is actually her last day with my department, so she's spending her last couple hours with all of you. I want to extend my personal thanks to Erin for serving as Commission Clerk for the last couple months. She has done an amazing job. Erin also worked with me on the entire selection process last year, which was very extensive, as you all know. Erin will be missed within the Clerk of the Board Department, and I know with the redistricting team. So thank you, Erin, for all of your service. And taking over for Erin will be David Hall. David retired as Clerk of the Board of Supervisors in 2019. Prior to retirement, David served in the Clerk of the Board Department since 1998 in a variety of different capacities. He rose through the ranks to become Chief Deputy Clerk of the Board, Assistant Clerk of the Board, then finally being appointed as Clerk of the Board of Supervisors in 2015. He is well-versed in Robert's Rules of Order, having clerked over 200 Board of Supervisors meetings. He's a certified clerk of the board and just a genuinely great person. So he has already brought himself up to speed on redistricting in the commission, and he is also observing today's meeting behind the scenes. So I know you will be in great hands with David Hall. So thank you to Erin very much, and welcome to David Hall.
Well, thank you, Andrew. Thanks to the entire team in the Office of the Clerk of the Board for continuing to support the IRC through all these transitions. It's great to hear that David's joining us. It's great to hear all that experience. And David, I can guarantee you, we will maintain our record of, despite all that experience, finding a new challenge for you that you haven't ever confronted before. To Erin, again, congratulations on your promotion. Frankly, my biggest regret is that we're not doing this in person and can't recognize you the way you deserve. It's great that you're being promoted, but it will be a noticeable absence for us. And it's not just for the public to know of the things that you do during the meetings. It's what you do before the meetings with those wonderful microphone checks and making sure that we're all actually participating and able to participate, and doing so with a really friendly face, and then creating the minutes, which we'll see yet again today. It's a great load off my mind to know those minutes are so good at just the right level of detail and doing what minutes are supposed to do, capture the moment and establish the record. It really is outstanding service. We thank you. We congratulate you, and we wish you all the success in the world for your new role. With that, let me ask Erin one last time for some information about today's meeting and how we will proceed.
Thank you very much, Chair Bame, and thank you to everyone. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I'll miss you. I've just enjoyed this experience so much, so thank you. I'm really looking forward to seeing the final outcome of all of your efforts. So at this time, I will invite any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at www.sandiego.gov/redistricting. We ask the individuals who wish to submit an online request to speak form in advance, please do that in advance for planning purposes. All the requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting will be honored. In addition, agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Filipino, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law.
Thank you very much, Erin. The next item on the agenda is the roll call. Erin, can you call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bame. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note for the record that all the commissioners are participating via teleconference. As such, all votes will be handled by our roll call vote. I'll ask the commissioners to please unmute your microphone and say here or present. Chair Bame.
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina.
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Dostal. Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Enman.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Kruglia.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Pons.
Here.
Commissioner Russ.
Here.
And Commissioner Servin will be joining us after 6:00 this evening. Thank you, Chair Bame.
And thank you, Erin. The next item on the agenda is non-agenda public communication speakers. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on subject matters within the commission's jurisdiction, but not as an item on today's agenda. The only action the commission may take is referral to staff. Erin, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda items?
We did not receive any advance requests to speak, but if there are any members of the public who do wish to address the commission at this time, you can please raise your virtual hand by pressing star 9 if you're participating by telephone, or click the raise hand button if you're participating using the Zoom link, and we will call on you to speak. Not seeing any raised hands at this time, Chair Bame. I'll also note for the record that the commission's log of ex parte communications received has been updated on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from both the April 8, 2021 Special Meeting for Industry Day and the IRC regular meeting held that same day. So commissioners, please note that we'll be approving two sets of minutes with one vote. Erin, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
We did not receive any advance requests to speak, but if any members of the public would like to address the commission on this item, you may press star 9 or raise your virtual hand using the Zoom link if you would like to address the commission on this. Not seeing any raised hands, Chair Bame.
Very good. Are there any clarifying questions or comments from commissioners before I ask for a motion? Very good. Is there a motion to approve both sets of the minutes that I just described?
They're moved.
From Commissioner Diaz, second.
Second.
Commissioner Brown, thank you very much. Any discussion? Very good. Erin, would you please call the roll for the vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Enman. Commissioner Dostal, I believe, is absent. Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Kruglia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson, I believe, is also, has not joined us yet. Commissioner Servin has not joined us yet. Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Erin, I'm sorry, Commissioner Servin just popped up on our screen.
Great. Commissioner Servin, would you like to reflect a vote on this item? Maybe we'll try coming back to him, give him a minute to get settled. Commissioner Pons.
Aye.
Chair Bame.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Vice Chair Katerina.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
And Commissioner Servin.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what we're voting on, so I think it's...
This is the approval of the minutes for both the special and regular meetings from April 8. So would you like to vote on that item?
Sure, yes, I reviewed them, and I will vote to approve.
Great, thank you. So that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present, voting aye.
Very good. Thank you, Erin. So we move on to item two on the agenda with Commission Business, additional Commissioner Training. Today, we're going to hear more about the 2020 Census Complete Count Working Group and its efforts in outreach to engage county residents in completing the 2020 census. Several commissioners have mentioned the interesting and significant efforts of this group, and I think we're all eager to hear this information. Let me begin by expression, expressing our collective pleasure to welcome our two guest speakers. First, Rachel Cortez, Cortez, is a senior researcher and modeler for the San Diego Association of Government, Sandag. At Sandag, she works within the Economic and Demographic Analysis and Modeling Group, which is responsible for the population and housing estimates and socioeconomic forecast for the San Diego region. Rachel is a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University, where she received her master's and doctorate in sociology with an emphasis in demography and statistical methods. Rachel began her career working for the U.S. Census Bureau back in the days when she actually got things out on time. I'm sorry, that's not fair. In the, she worked there in the Net International Migration Branch within the Population Division. After that, she worked for the Population Reference Bureau, or PRB, performing demographic research for various nonprofit institutions. Before graduating, she held a predoctoral research position at the Max Planck Institute for Demographic Research in Rostock, Germany. That's an institute that does absolutely amazing work in addition to everything else. So Rachel, welcome. Thanks for coming tonight. Also joining us is Angelica Davis, a senior management analyst and project manager for the City of Chula Vista's Housing Division, where she oversees affordable housing development projects and social service programs. She served as the 2020 Census Sandag Working Group Chair and represented the South County cities. Angelica received her bachelor's degree in public administration from San Diego State University, another preeminent institution. And I can tell you firsthand, as a resident of Chula Vista, she's done just some amazing things for this community, and we thank you for that, as well, thank you for being here today. We'll follow our usual format. After the presentation, commissioners will have a chance to ask questions, then we'll have public comments, and then have, I'm sorry, we'll probably do public comments first because it's an informational item, and then have commissioners ask questions or offer comments. Again, this is an informational item with no action for the commission. I'll now turn it over to presenters. Ms. Cortez, you first.
Yeah, thanks for having us. Yeah, I'm gonna start off, and Angelica's gonna take over. And I think I can speak for both of us, that we're really excited to talk to you guys about the work that Sandag and the jurisdictions in the region for the 2020 Census Outreach. Next slide, please. So the goals, 2020 Complete Count Committee, were really three main goals, to raise awareness about Census 2020, to access for people in the region to complete their census form and to increase self-response. So the statistics tell us that when people self-repond to Census or probably any survey, the data that are derived from those completed surveys have the best data quality. They're also the least expensive. So improving self-response really gives you better data and saves money overall. And as everyone probably knows, this was the first where it was completed. The option was available to do it online. So improving access for people in the region to actually get the data, get their form in the mail, nowhere to go. They could get online and answer their questions was a goal of this. We can change the slide, please. Yes, so really, you want everyone in the region to answer the census, but statistically, we've seen that there are certain in the country, not just San Diego region, that are less likely to reply to the census, to do their self-reporting. And those are shown on the screen here. It's usually underserved population in a region, and these are the communities that they say are at risk of being undercounted, mostly because they probably won't return their forms in the mail. And we want to get better data for these groups. So really, a lot of the Complete Count Committee was aimed at reaching specifically these groups within the region. Next slide. So the other big part of the Complete Count Committee was coordinating with all of the partners in the region. I think, actually, could you do the next slide? This is just filler, filler slide. So Sandag is the regional census center for the region. For this, in every region in the state has a regional center. So I owe you that. I took it over after Darlan Hockter, who may or may not know, I'm not sure if she's ever attended to this group before, but was the project manager for that. She retired at the end of the year, and I took the project over from her. But we do that, the serving as a regional census data center is like an ongoing responsibility that Sandag undertakes. That's every year. When the Census 2020 was coming along, we added on this Complete Count, another part project. And Sandag served as goal agent for that project, which meant that it allocated to each of the area, sub-areas within the state. We took in that money and developed a methodology and allocated the money to the different jurisdictions and also community-based organizations that were going to actually do the work, that do the actual outreach. So Sandag obviously has access to representatives from the cities, to elected officials. We also have, you know, the tribal governments, different transit agencies. So we kind of brought all of these groups together and worked on a process and different ways to complete outreach to the different groups within the region to improve the count. Next slide, please. I think Angelica can probably give you more information on that. So the other kind of service that Sandag provided during the Complete Count was a lot of data services. So this is a picture of a tool that Sandag developed based on data that the Census Bureau made available for the entire country. And the, so the shadings in on the map that are different kind of shades of orange or red are those hard-to-count communities. So you can see that that little pop-up box, it's highlighted a census tract, and it's telling us that the California Hard-to-Count, the HTC index is 77, which means that they took all, like, all of those measures about the hard-to-count populations, they created an index of all of those. So the number of, you know, the number, count of immigrant population, the count of, you know, population and poverty, population, of, you know, all the data that they have at the census. They created an index and then created that index for every census tract in the county. And then they, that's how they told us where you need to focus this outreach. So Sandag took those data and put them into a mapping tool that any of the partners could access and kind of see where those different parts of their kind of jurisdiction or area that they serve, where that kind of pops up in the places where they need to concentrate their efforts. So the dots here, I think, are actual locations that outreach was conducted, but there's a little bit more on that on the next slide that I can tell you about. Okay, maybe not, but we can get into more of that if you're interested. So what, so we gave the information on the hard-to-count areas. We asked the CBOs and different jurisdictions, they were delivered the money to do outreach and different events or mailers or all that stuff. I think Angelica is gonna be able to talk more about that because she was really more involved in all of that than I was. And then part of the reporting that Sandag had to do back to the state was to tell them how much that outreach actually affected the community where it was taking place. So you can see here that this is just, this is through September of last year, but this is the number of events in each of those different activities. So for example, you can say that the different advertising activities, there were 329 distinct advertising kind of campaigns that took place. And the estimated impression, which is, you know, some kind of communications term that I'm not super familiar with how you quantify it, but it's kind of an estimate of kind of the reach of that event. So if you sent out a mailer, you could say, well, that went out to about 12 million people in the region, or I expect 12 million people to have access to it or see it. So you can see that there are some things that reach a lot of people, and there are some things that reach fewer people, but they're all really important because of what we were saying before with that hard-to-count population being really, you know, very diverse and needing a lot of individual outreach to get to them. Can you go to the next slide, please? This is the same information. Yeah, so that's good. We can look at those individually if that's interesting. So this is just kind of a map of that information. So all the dots are all of the outreach that took place from the different agencies performing that outreach with that same hard-to-count index under it. So you can kind of see, you can't see because we did so much outreach, you can't even see the bottom map, which is great. But I think if you could see it, you would see that a lot of that outreach took place in places that had that darker orange color, where we already knew that there were a lot of people that we needed to reach to get the word out about Census 2020. The next slide. So this is the same, except it's cross-tabulated by the kind of person that outreach targeted. So we had groups that were focused on Asian-American Pacific Islander groups or seniors or immigrants or, you know, ethnic or racial minorities, people with disabilities. These are all those groups that we looked at at the very beginning of the presentation, where we know that these groups are less likely to self-respond to the census. Next slide, please. Same here, except the outreach was in different languages. This was an important distinction for Census 2020 also because the mailer was mailed in a specific languages developed at the, I think, the country level. They picked the languages that the different forms were going to be available in. Of course, they're available in any language, I think, if you contacted the Census Bureau directly, but making sure that people even knew that they should do that and the language that they speak at home was really important. So this was tracking those impressions by the language. I think that the outreach was conducted in. Next slide. And so, okay, here's the good news. After all of that outreach and when the census was finally wrapped up, much later than it should have or was intended to be wrapped up, we actually did have a higher response rate. If you go to the very bottom, you can see that we had almost 6% higher self-response rates in the county in 2020 versus 2010, which I think is just a really great, really great to show that this outreach really did something in the region. In 2010, I don't think we had any budget really at all for these operations. And I could look into that, but it was not, if there was budget, it was nowhere near the amount of money that we got for 2020 to do this outreach. So, and like I said, the self-response rate is really, really interesting. And you can see that at the state level, they actually had a lower self-response rate, and at the nation also set less than seven, the 7% lower response rate. So we did better than the state and the nation in self-response. I think it's next slide, but I'm actually handing it over at this point to Angelica, who's gonna talk about some of the specific, I guess, lessons learned and also the outreach that she and other persons in the Complete Count Committee conducted.
Thank you. And I did get a chance to work with Darlan, so I'm really happy that you're with us, Rachel. And as you said, we did, just to kind of piggyback off what you said on the other slide, I'm so proud of this committee. I was so proud not only to represent the South Bay, but the region and serve as a chair for the working group, because it was, we came in... Because it was, um, we came into it, um, already facing a few challenges, knowing that our region had a lot of hard to, hard, hard to count census tracks. And then, you know, fast forward, we have a pandemic. So, um, with that, I think we'll go to the next slide. So challenges, let's talk a little bit about that. So aside from the anticipated challenges we faced with the large number of hard to count census tracks, we had to adjust to the new ones, right? So I'm going to go through just a quick summary of what those challenges were. So the pandemic was already mentioned, um, as it related to the inability to follow up through with, with planned events. Due to stay-at-home directive, a lot of our public facilities were closed, like our libraries. A lot of our resource centers were initially, initially closed. And that's where we were going to have a lot of our piosks and our questionnaire centers. So not only that, but additionally, staff had to be, um, deployed to other things to address COVID-19. For example, the food distribution sites and things like that, where they were going to be focused on the census. All of a sudden, their, um, their priorities had to shift to COVID-related responses that we can all imagine. The state did come through and did a great job at branding, but the release of their branding came in a little bit late, which I think put a lot of the cities and our partners in a position to have to develop their own branding. Um, and we believe that this, this made it a little bit confusing, um, that we had, you know, all these beautiful logos, but we didn't have a consistent branding throughout. We thought that that was a little bit of a challenge because there was already a lot of confusion out there, um, with the census to begin with. So that added a little bit of a, of a challenge for us. So to add to the growing challenges, um, also is the changing timeline that we kept getting from the federal government. It created an uncertainty, um, not only for the, uh, the community, but also for staff as we're trying to plan, uh, to pivot to this, uh, to these new, um, priorities and then have to adjust your budget. So, um, that timeline drove us crazy at the end. But I'm not going to end with that. Let's go to the next slide and, um, we'll talk about how we, how we adjusted. So despite the restrictions, uh, related to the pandemic, the goals and objectives persisted. Operationally, there was a slight pause in March, which is when the stay-at-home directive, um, was ordered. So as we were transitioning from our original goals, um, March was a little bit of a, of a, of a quiet month. But, um, depending on the, like, the original scheduled event, um, it was able to move forward. Whether it was, uh, or some of them were postponed, but a lot of them were able to be done virtually. These are ACBOs, our community partners, were amazing and so creative. They came up with videos and things like that. They were just amazing. So you could see some of the images on the slide. We had a lot of creative ways, um, that we adapted. So you, we had a lot of caravans that paraded through most of these hard to count communities. The ones that had the lowest response rates. Like I said, we created videos, um, and just essentially just sharing the importance of the census to anybody and everybody that would listen to us, whether it was honking down the street, it didn't matter. We were screaming it out there. So with the emergent need, um, for food distribution and COVID-19 testing sites in our community, we seized that opportunity and thought, you know what, we're already, we already have their attention. Let's, let's take advantage of that. And we started having these events, um, these essentially drive-by events where we had, obviously with a proper PPE, we would be out there in line, giving them the test, giving them the bag of food, which is so needed, and then informing them on the census. One of the things, um, we kept getting interviews about COVID and what is the city doing about COVID? And, and what is your response? And they ran a story that I happened to do on, uh, the Rental Assistance Program. And they kept focusing on that program and I called, it was Joe Little, actually. And I called him back and I said, hey, great interview. However, I just want to let you know that the city got all this money because of the census data that we got 10 years ago. Is there a way that you could spin it and talk about that? Because there is a lot of uncertainty right now with, uh, with, with people responding. They were frightened. They didn't know about the citizenship questions, things like that. So that's where we started to spin the stories because there were so many resources coming to the community. And we brought it back and said, hey, this was because of 10 years ago. If you want to continue these services in your community that you deserve, you got to make it count. You, you've got to make sure that you, yeah, you complete your survey. So those are some of the things that, that we did, um, to get creative. Um, what else did we do? Let's see. So we created toolkits, um, with plug-and-play content to make it easy for multiple parties, for specific target audiences. And then we did develop, um, some other specific marketing material for like elected officials to go out there and tell their story, particularly military and veterans, um, and different organizations. So those are kind of the things that, that we did. Um, next slide. Oh, the successes, that's what I want to keep talking about. So turning to successes, again, I would reiterate that the partnerships were key throughout the phases of, of the outreach. As Rachel talked about earlier, our community partners, that was the amazing thing that through Sandag, all the cities were able to get money into their community. And then in addition, through United Way, community-based organizations were able to get funding as well. So who better than those community organizations to know how to reach them and how to do it properly and how they're going to, to, to listen, right? It's those trusted messengers. So that was the partnerships. I couldn't, I couldn't emphasize enough how important they were. And again, since we hit the ground running, I have to say, as soon as we heard that we were doing this, um, we started holding events. I mean, starting in September, uh, was it 2019? So since, oh my gosh, sorry.
Rachel, do you think, I think you probably lost Angelica. I don't know if you could help finish this off until she gets back.
Yeah, I, um, I don't have any personal experience with the actual outreach, but I think there's only like one slide left anyway, so maybe we can, um, let me see if it's. Yeah, so I think we were, we were wrapping up anyway. So maybe, um, if, I don't know if there wanted to be a discussion and we could wait and see if she can join us. Because I'm assuming your questions might be for her, but I'm happy to answer anything I can. I think, do I call in people or, oh, okay, yeah.
You know, Rachel, no, it's fine. Because I think it'll be good if we can move to the public comment in just a moment. Before we do, I do want to offer my thanks to you and to Angelica. We'll thank her again when she gets back. It, it's really impressive to me how the collection of ideas and the planning and the effort yielded the results. And for commissioners, um, and frankly, for the public too, I think it was slides 12, the, the self-response rates. That's impressive, not just in a near 6% increase countywide, but when you look at the breakdowns by jurisdiction, every one except one went up. So it's not just deep, it's wide how it went. And, um, again, Rachel, you understand statistics far better than me. But whenever I see that kind of combination of that 5.8% in the lower right, but all those positives in the difference spread throughout the county, that's statistically significant, but real results. And, and as many of the commissioners have said before, it's all about results. All right. I hope we got Angelica back. Um, but before I open the floor for commissioner questions, Erin, do we have any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bane. We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item. But if any members of the public would like to address the commission, please raise your virtual hand now. If you're joining by phone, you can press star nine. I do not see any members of the public who, uh, would like to address the commission on this item, Chair Bane. But I do see Commissioner Krugliak has raised her hand.
Right. So I'll ask, um, who's ever running the screen to see if we can get back to the, um, full screen, full gallery view, and it might be on my end, but we'll see. Commissioner Kugliak, then Commissioner Russ, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that great presentation. I just had a, really a couple of, um, related clarifying questions. The first is how to think about impressions. So there were two that really stuck out. One was that, um, total, there were 12 million impressions just for advertising. There's obviously far fewer people than that in all of San Diego. So that either is touching people beyond San Diego or is touching San Diegan, uh, more than once. So I, I kind of would like to understand, uh, what that means. And then the second one that popped out just as being a bit off on the numbers was that the total number of impressions for Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders was upwards of 9 million, but for Hispanics was under 1 million, despite the, uh, population of those two groups actually being reversed in terms of, uh, representation in the county. So I just kind of wanted to understand, um, those two numbers just popped out and I'd like to kind of understand how you interpret those.
Um, Rachel, if you'd like, I, I apologize. I have no idea what happened to, to me, but I was almost done with my presentation. All that was left was thank you for having me here. As far as the impressions are concerned, you are correct. It is, um, it's more than one impression. So that data was collected through all of the jurisdictions. We would report back each month on what our efforts were. So let's just say that we, uh, did an advertisement in, uh, the news or whatnot. It depends on how many people you assume, um, would have seen that and how many times. And that's where they, they came up with the number. They do say that it takes seven times for somebody to remember something. So, um, I, that's probably intention, but you are correct. It's not 12 million and people total. It is the amount of times that you actually, you have that touch point.
Yeah, and I, I, maybe I could say something about Asian Americans and, and how, you can come in. But we had a very, um, uh, involved person who was in, in, in charge of the Asian American Coalition. I forget the name of, um, I mean, Joanne Fields, I know her name, but I don't know the name of the organization she works for. So I would have to say that's probably a result of a very robust outreach that she did. And, uh, from her organization's standpoint, I don't know if Angelica knows any, but that, that would be my impression of why there's so many more for, for the Asian American community.
I believe it is API and she wasn't just involved, um, in, in one area. She was involved in the entire region and she was out there from day one. So that is, that is probably why the number is higher.
So I have next Commissioner Russ, then Commissioner Chen, then Vice-Co-Chair Garcia. Commissioner Russ.
Yes, I was interested in the metric, the, uh, hard to count metric of 77. I assume that's a unitless measure. I mean, uh, is it desirable to have it higher or lower? Or is there an upper limit of 100 or, uh, can you explain that, um, that metric a bit? Thank you.
That's a great question that I, I think I know the answer to. So, yeah, I think the upper limit is 100, but they considered anything over 37 to be a hard to count community. And it's just really a composite between all of those data sets. So the percentage of all of the different types of population that they determined were hard to count, composite together into an index zero to 100. And, um, we flagged anything over 37 because that's what the Census Bureau flagged as a hard to count, where that kind of started. I, I don't know much about how, why it's not 36 or 38. I, it, it probably has to do with, you know, the distribution of those community, the index over the entire country, maybe. And then the ones that are maybe above and below the median or something. But, um, yeah, it's, it's a composite index.
So, so we're a hard to count county is what, what 77 is saying. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, very interesting. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Chen.
Do you have any metrics on the per-dollar effectiveness of the various outreach methods?
That's a great question. I do not have anything like that. But I don't know if that might be something I could ask the Census Bureau for or, um, see what they're, if they collected anything like that. That's not something that, that we measured, I guess would be the right word.
So we have to make decisions, obviously, in which outreach methods we use. We have a limited budget. So if you did have information on that, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I'll reach out.
Thank you. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that presentation and, uh, congratulations on such a successful, um, effort. I'm, I'm really impressed. I'm, I'm curious to know, given that our county did so well compared to the state and compared to the nation, um, I'm, I'm wondering if you've, you know, I, I would imagine that you've been in touch with other counties and, you know, with other jurisdictions and maybe done some, um, you know, assessments of what they did and what you did. And, um, you know, can you tell us anything about? It seems to me that part of what's happening in San Diego County was just a really outstanding ability to engage all of these community groups. And then they were really activated and motivated to, to get out there and, 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 um, and make sure that we were counting as many people as we could. But I'm wondering if there's anything else that you know that might account for, you know, this tremendous success.
One is the community, absolutely. The, the partners, the cities and the, the community partners are nonprofits that we work with are so vested in the community. But you, we were surprised to hear that even though the money was available to, to us, because California, I believe, was one of the states that invested the most money in this effort. Some jurisdictions just didn't want the funding. They, they didn't, uh, put the effort that we did. And in San Diego, immediately we jumped at the opportunity. Of course, we're going to take the money and, and do what we can. But there were states, like for example, Texas, that didn't invest $1 and I was shocked to hear that. I don't know what it is throughout the nation. We were just so focused on what's going on in San Diego and, and making sure we, we got to our goal. Just to put it out there, my goal for, for Cholovista was 79 and we made it to, I think, 78. Something, but I'm still happy with it. But I think, um, that you, you raised a really good point. We were just very committed to the effort and everybody that was at that table felt the exact same way. And I think it's the background of the people that were involved. They were informed and they knew just what the effects of the census and what the money does for the communities. It's not just for building, I mean, I'm in housing just for building affordable housing, but it's your hospitals. It's, it's, um, your schools, it is economic development. It impacts everything that you do every day and when you deliver that message. And we did that. I, I, I believe that we did that here in San Diego and I don't know if other regions did. I don't know if they made that tie.
Thank you for that.
I think we've got Commissioner Diaz and then that's it. Let me just take a quick look. Any other commissioners wishing to ask a question or comment? Commissioner Ponce after Commissioner Diaz and that'll be it. Commissioner Diaz.
This is just an anecdotal observation. Uh, thank you, by the way, for your presentation. I was out there in the community, not doing the outreach or anything, but I was observing, especially at these, um, community organizations that were distributing food, uh, and meals, that they were also talking about the census and inserting information in the bag. And I thought that was just such an effective, um, strategy. And, um, I, I think that the key was meeting people where they're at. And, and, and especially in communities like it heavily populated, uh, immigrant, uh, communities as well, like City Heights is where I saw this happening. Uh, there was a lot of boots on the ground. You know, uh, volunteers out there. And, you know, everyone was, was safe, wearing PPE, everything. But I, I just noticed that in the, and, and it, it just made such a, such a difference. So thank, thank you so much for, for doing that.
Thanks for that. Commissioner Ponce.
Yes, I'm sorry. My raise the hand function is not working. Great presentation. Thank you very much. So I'm really trying to understand the data. And when you say that there was impressions in the mode for contact, is there a correlation between impressions and actual census counts? What, which one of these modes actually delivered, uh, individuals filling out the census data?
Oh, that's a good question.
Yeah, that's good. Um, I, I think, I honestly, I don't think that there's any way to, to know that from these data the way that we collected them. Because, um, there, you would make an impression on a person, but you didn't know when or if they actually did their form. I mean, there's no connection between the different data sets. But I, I guess it could be interesting to see, um, if they had response rates for a different, you know, if they, if they went below the county and then we can see where the impressions were highest and if that had a correlation with, um, with response rates. and if that had a correlation with, with response rates were the highest also. But unfortunately, there, it would be great if you made an impression and then handed someone the form and saw if they filled it out or something, like an exit poll or something like that for, for an event. But that is, this is kind of just an estimate of, you know, who you think you reached when you, when you did X thing or sent X thing out. But, and I actually haven't seen the self-response rates below the county level, so I could look into that too and see if that information's available. We could see if there's any correlations there between, you know, high, high event, number of events or outreach. I don't know if, Anhelic, if you had any other thoughts about it?
No, I haven't seen any of the, of the latest data that we could compare to those outreach efforts and see if they, how effective those touch points were. I could certainly look into it.
Yeah, it goes to the issue of return on investment. I mean, you did a great job on the outreach and, you know, engagement piece, but how do you know you got a return on that investment, especially if this investment in this process is going to increase in the out years? So when I did the census, I don't remember if that was the last question that said, you know, what made you fill out the census form? And if it wasn't there, based on what you've done, it wasn't hard. I see you shaking your head, right? So I mean, if we're going to do lessons learned, I mean, maybe in the next census, you know, in the next, you know, in 2030, that could be a recommendation to add that question to say, what prompted you to actually fill out this census? And that way you can actually gauge the return on the investment, not just contact, but what you got out of it. But thank you very much for the presentation.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Kugliak.
Sorry, one really quick follow-up to that, and that is, when you talk about below the county level, I'm sorry for the noise, but do you have self-response rates by group? So, you know, Hispanic, all of those groups that you identified as these hard-to-reach areas, do you have those self-response rates already versus 2010? Or is that something that just basically comes out when the census data is available?
That is a good question. I'm not sure. I do think that that data would be available. I just, I'm not sure what product it would be available, and if that's something that they release as a product before data release. I, I know just from using the data that they'll have mode of, you know, mode of answering or something like that, so you could know if it was, you know. Usually it would be like, was it a form or did they call you or did they have to go to your house? This might be internet phone response follow-up. And so I think that information probably would be available, but I'm not sure. I can look into that too and see if that's something that they released with the self-reporting kind of packet of information, or if we'd have to wait for microdata to analyze something like that. So that's a good follow-up too. You guys have good follow-up. You're asking cool questions. I wish I had better answers, but I don't.
Anhelic, did you want to add to that?
No, I think, I think Rachel covered it. I mean, we were so excited when it was announced that, you know, the most of it would be done online because we thought, you know, because I love data also. I thought, oh my goodness, it's in real time. We'll be able to download all this. And unfortunately, it's not out yet, but we'll do some research for you guys.
Appreciate it, because I just want to pick up on something Commissioner Diaz and I think several others said. It's getting people where they are and getting them talking that I found really useful. Rachel, you pointed out the maps at one point and the hard to count map, and then the engagement dots. I think that's incredibly valuable. I still remember sitting at a table with a couple of parents at a school event, one parent having read a newspaper article, one having seen something at a COVID testing facility, and one having a little door hanger. And then gratefully, some, a public official was right there and available to get them to go online right then and there, and they filled out their census data, census data via computer. It was just one of those moments where you see the buzz at home really getting people excited. So I think it's the combination that is really, really interesting to follow, and a lot of good points for us. But thank you for the follow-up in advance, as well as everything. Thank you, Anhelic. Thank you, Rachel. Both tremendous information. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on now to Agenda Item Three. An update from the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee and a discussion and possible approval, meaning an action item, of a resolution in support of California Senate Bill 594 authored by Senator Steve Glaser. As commissioners will recall, the receipt of census data has been significantly delayed, while our deadline to adopt a redistricting app of December 15th, 2021, has not yet changed. SB 594 was introduced in February to try and address the impact of all this on local redistricting efforts. The IRC, as you'll recall, formed this ad hoc committee at our last meeting to develop legislative or other recommendations regarding the timeline for redistricting with a four-fold purpose. And I'll just read them briefly to remind, one, to monitor developments regarding the delay in delivery of the census data; two, assess potential impacts on the duties and timelines of our commission; three, gather information from other affected agencies and organizations regarding those matters; and four, report back to the full commission with recommended options for action, including but not limited to actions regarding SB 594. The ad hoc committee has moved very swiftly, and it's impressive. And on behalf of the commission, I hope I can say, thank you very much, members of the ad hoc committee for your work and for making the time to help advance this important action. Today, the ad hoc committee is presenting a draft resolution of support for SB 594 for the commission's consideration. I'll now turn to Commissioner Russ from the ad hoc committee.
All right, thank you, Chair. Great, you have the first slide up there and, and you correctly stated what our purpose was, as, as was adopted two weeks ago. And, and what we tried to do was to essentially look at what is it that's, that's causing us probably the most heartburn? I think most heartburn is obviously that compressed, compressed timeline that we have. And probably the, the best vehicle that we have to, to address this right now is the, is the Glazer bill, the SB 594. Could you go to the next slide, please? Our, our committee met several times, and several times we met with, in conjunction with our counsel, Margarita Leoni. And in, during this, during these times, we, we looked at what was happening in the 594 bill. Margarita's kept us well, well apprised over these last months as to what's happening. And we have seen that it has gone in and out of committee twice. The, the time that it came out of committee on, in the middle of March was one that made some changes to ensure that as much time as possible for the line drawing and public and community participation, despite the constraints of the delayed census. And, and what they did was they, they allowed that the deadline for, for the mapping is actually, would be when a resolution is passed, not necessarily when it's effective. So we have had some benefit. We have had a 30-day reprieve due to, due to 594. And, and there could, and as I said, these are, 594 will probably be a vehicle for any other relief that we may, that we may have. It is currently, has been endorsed by the California Special Districts Association, the League of Women Voters of California, and the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And what the committee is, is proffering today is a motion to, to send a resolution to the, to the legislature, to the author of the 594, to show our support. Can I have the next slide, please? The other things that the committee has been looking into, and if you've read the ex parte logs that were, that were posted just, just a little bit before the, our meeting right now, you can see that we are trying to coordinate some, some actions with the, with some of the other stakeholders, one of which is, of course, the LA County Citizens' Redistricting Commission. We have, we, we sat in on their last meeting that they had where they actually passed a couple of resolutions to, to effectively change the, the elections code. And, and one of the significant things that their resolution did was, was to reduce the 30 days of between comment, between public comment on, on maps, down to, down to 10 days. Now, now our committee is not in favor of really reducing the, the amount of time that the public can have to, to look over any of our maps. So, so we're not in favor actually of, of reducing the, the time between the, the hearings for, for any, any maps that we may draw. But we are, we are in conversations with the LA County Citizens' Redistricting Commission. And the ex parte notices, we showed that we're reaching out to the registrar voters, legislative staff, some other, also the California statewide database director. And just, for example, on the statewide database director, we're looking to see whether or not we might be able to get data released on incarcerated individuals before we actually get the, the final state-approved database. That might give us a little bit of a head start, or our demographer a bit of a head start in, in developing some of the, some of the lines that we may want to draw. Could I have the next slide, please? And so, so what we're proposing today, hopefully everybody has read the resolution that was in the packet that was sent to everybody. We are, we are proposing a resolution to support SB 594 Glazer. And, and this committee would like to make a motion to support this resolution.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Russ. Thank you again, members of the ad hoc committee, for this impressive work. Before we turn to members of the public and then turn to a discussion under a motion, I'd like to invite commissioners to ask any clarifying questions or offer any clarifying comments they might have. I would note that Margarita Leoni is with us and I'm sure is available to answer any questions as well. So before we turn to public comment, let me just ask if there are any questions or comments commissioners want to offer to clarify, or in clarification of the presentation you just took. Commissioner in.
It's just a follow-on to what Commissioner Russ did say. In the resolution, if you read the resolution, it is clearly in support of the Glazer bill, which is the intent. It also includes a language that says, that's not the only thing that we are pursuing to gain relief though. So I just want to call that out specifically. It says, we also reserve the right, or we also will be pursuing other stakeholders, as Commissioner Russ mentioned, to, to find other means to, again, try to do anything that we can, just to make sure that we're mitigating or avoiding any, any issues with the compressed timeline. So it's, it's not purely just, you know, support the Glazer bill, it's support the Glazer bill, but also make a statement that we are pursuing all options that we can find, coordinating with the LA Citizens' Registering Commission, register voters, talking with other stakeholders that, that may be able to help us or have a common interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Larson.
Okay, well, I certainly support this, the motion and, and the resolution. I would recommend that not only do we send this to Senator Glazer, but we send it to every assembly person and the various senators who represent San Diego County, and make sure they understand what our view is, because it's their vote on the Senate bill that's going to count.
Thank you for that. I'll just add that there is a little work to be done if the resolution is adopted in terms of how it's transmitted. We're already in touch with county staff, and I think Margarita's also been part of the process where there is just that kind of point, Commissioner Larson. And I think the, the way it'll be tackled is probably in a transmittal letter. One thing, though, I did want to clarify for the commission is that transmittal letter could very well be a vehicle to identify some of the more specific ideas and considerations we might want the committees and staff in Sacramento to consider. I promise you, in putting that letter together, we will reflect the kinds of presentations and comments that have already been offered in our last few meetings. And I think there's a good sense of that, but we could certainly discuss that further if you like. Any more clarifying questions or comments? Very good. Seeing none. Having a little issue with my screen. There we go. Okay, good. Erin, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item, but if you would like to address the commission on this item, please raise your virtual hand now. Or if you're participating by telephone, you may press star nine, and we will call on you to speak. I see that David Holtzman has a hand raised, so we will begin with David Holtzman. You'll have three minutes to address the commission.
Hello, hello, everyone. David Holtzman here from the Los Angeles County Commission. I'm not speaking for the commission, and I'm not speaking for the League of Women Voters, of which I was once president of the Los Angeles chapter. I want to say, though, I think it's great that you have this committee and you're jumping in feet-first to, you know, see what we can do about this problem that we share. But with regard to the resolution at hand, I think it's premature to be supporting SB 594, because as amended, SB 594 really gives us nothing, really, nothing of any significance. And to say that you support 594 as amended, you may, you might end up with the bill as amended and nothing else. What it's good about the resolution is your intention to work with stakeholders and the author to get actual solutions into the bill. So I, I might not be, I was just not sending a support letter for SB 594 as it exists, but sending a letter saying that you're going to, you want to work together to, to really solve the late census data problem. So that's my comment here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. If there are any other members of the public who would like to address the commission on this item, please raise your virtual hand now, and we will call on you to speak. Not seeing any other raised hands, Chair Bame, so that will conclude public testimony on this item.
Very good. Thank you. So in order to continue the discussion, we need a motion to approve the resolution in support of SB 594 offered by Senator Glazer. That's the wording that I saw from the ad hoc committee. The motion approved the resolution. I'm sorry.
So moved.
Commissioner Russ, second?
My second.
Commissioner Larson. All right. Um, I'd be happy and entertain commissioners who want to have discussion. I'm wondering if it might be useful to invite Margarita to offer some comments based on the presentation and what we've just heard, if that's acceptable, everyone? And since I don't see any hands right at the moment anyway. Margarita, would you like to offer some thoughts?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much, Chair Bame. If there's going to be relief for the commission and our counties and also the Los Angeles Commission, it's going to be Senate Bill 594. That is the train that everybody is on. And by this resolution, what it seems to me, the commission is saying we are engaged and we support actions to address our needs, to perform the duties that were given us by the legislature. SB 594, in truth, actually does not amend your statute, the statute that controls you, but it amends a statute that is incorporated into your processes. And in that manner, it gives you 30 days additional time with the clarification. If you look back at our record, in January, I think it was our January 14th meeting, we presented our initial timeline. Staff worked very hard on it, and this was weeks before we understood the seriousness of the census delay. And that timeline anticipates a, a conservative approach to And that timeline anticipates a a conservative approach to the referendum. And to protect your jurisdiction, that you needed to act well before the deadline of December fifteenth. What the legislature has done is clarify in the March amendments that you actually have until the fifteenth of December. That is helpful. If that's the only thing that happens, you're better off than you were when we started the process. There is certainly other things that can be done, and that's what our ad hoc is working on. And the commitment to work with other stakeholders, I think, is commendable. It's important to recommend that this is an urgency bill. And there are a lot of people that are concerned with these deadlines, including our elections official who have to run the elections in the districts you come up with. And the elections official timing is completely dependent on yours. And so when we say we have a deadline of December fifteenth, we recognize that we are working with partners. That commitment is expressed in the resolution. And the resolution also states the intent of the commission to work on additional additional amendments that could help affected people. And then I do also want to recommend Chair Bame's recognized his suggestion that the cover letter here is going to be important. The resolution is an early resolution making this commission a participant in the process. What that participation, what that's going to come up with, we don't know yet. It would have been inappropriate to put any of that at this point in the early resolution. But the cover letter can certainly be a vehicle for promoting thought. If you have any questions on the language, on the the round, it's not even roundabout, anything on the language, on process, I'll be happy what I can do to help, but I think that the ad hoc is pursuing all the appropriate courses. And Chair Bame, with that, I turn it back to you.
Thank you very much for that. As always, extremely insightful with that touch of optimism that we've grown to love and appreciate. So thank you on the overall process. All right, other comments, discussion points, interventions, commissioners, Commissioner Krugliak.
I don't really have too much of a comment. I think just if we approve this resolution, I think it would be great if, in addition to the resolution as it's written, maybe there's a more easier to digest summary for anyone who comes on to our website to review what it is that we're doing. I work in clinical trials where documents are typically asked to be at like a sixth grade reading level. I realize that this can't be, but in general, I think something very streamlined and easy to review would be helpful to go along with this.
Thank you for that. I'm actually struggling this evening with fourth grade reading level material, but I think the point's very well taken. And Liberty, whatever's happening with this, I I do think capturing it correctly in the minutes, even with Erin's departure, it'll be a great opportunity for David to shine, so we'll have that right. But also, if if and when this motion passes, I think staff covering it the right way and maybe having the bullet point approach would be a great idea. And Commissioner Krugliak, thank you for that. Other comments or questions? Commissioner Ponce.
Yes, now speaking from a sixth grade reading level, but I agree absolutely to make it as simple as possible. But going back to what Marguerite said, you know, when I first read this, I was not, you know, overwhelmed with it. But when I got to the last part of the resolution, which keeps us engaged and involved in the process to make recommendations, you know, during the process, you know, S B five ninety four, I thought this is great because it's undeniable that we are part of the decision making process and not just part of the recommendation of the process itself. So thanks a lot. I really think your work, your body of work is reflected in the language of this document. And so thanks a lot. I mean, it wasn't easy, I know, because S B five ninety four is not easy to read, but you digest it and synthesize it just right. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Other comments? Okay, because we'll be moving to a vote in just a moment, unless there are any other comments. Very good. Seeing no more comments then. Erin, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bame, Vice Chair Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson is still absent, correct? Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Chair Bame.
Aye.
Commissioner Inman. Was that an I, Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponce.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Servin.
With many thanks to the committee's work. I'm voting I as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Krugliak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal, I believe, has not joined. Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Katerina.
Aye.
Thank you, and that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting I.
Duly noted, including the kind words from Commissioner Servin and Commissioner Inman, determined to make Erin's last meeting difficult. So on we go. Good, thank you very much for commissioners. I think we'll be in touch with that on that as we go forward. And again, my thanks to the ad hoc committee for all the great work already done and still to come. We move on to item four, discussion impossible approval. So an action item of the request for proposal, the RFP documents from the demographic services RFP ad hoc committee. The final draft RFP documents were included with your package for today's agenda. As a reminder, the ad hoc committee was created by the commission to create draft RFP for an industry procurement day that occurred on April eighth and to create evaluation criteria and scoring values. The H C was also tasked to consider revision of the RFP to incorporate applicable feedback and then present it at a subsequent I R C meeting, which is what we're doing today with this item. We are now in the final stages of the I R C's entire RFP processes. And I want to thank commissioners again from both committees that were working on these things for your significant efforts that have been involved in getting us to this point. I'll now turn to Commissioner Inman for a presentation from the ad hoc committee. Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. So can you hear me okay as my, I know, okay, thank you. Again, this is the proposal or the RFP for demographic services. And I first, again, I need to thank the cast of characters that helped make this get to this point. At times, it seems like, you know, we were never going to get here, but we finally did. So again, Commissioners Hanson, Larson, a dedicated team that really pulled this together along with staff, Liberty and Barbara, for sure, as well as legal counsel. And we couldn't have gotten here without procurement and and all of Richard's help on all of these documents. So again, a great team effort. And really, what you see now is is not the work of our ad hoc, but it's the work of all of these people coming together to to make this happen. So what we were charged with doing is coming up with four components, a statement of work, the pricing, schedule, evaluation criteria, and some middle items. Now, the RFP itself is much larger, as you can see from the packet. There's a lot of other standard information that goes into these RFPs that was put in there by procurement. But these are the core core components that we work on as part of the the timeline that goes along with this. If we get approval today, then it would be posted to Biden on Monday. And then submissions would be due by the tenth May, and then we would form the committee to review the the offers on the eleventh. Hopefully have a recommendation from the S S C back on June ten and possible execution or hiring of of the demographer, demographic services provider sometime in mid mid June. So go ahead and move on to the next slide. Let's. And also, if you if you recognize these slides, I I do need to give credit where credit is due. I am someone to always pile on to success. This was the template for the successful outreach, public outreach and engagement RFP. And so, of course, I borrowed their template and and worked. And so again, I appreciate them passing this on. Again, what we did was first draft of the core documents. And then we did have the industry day where we presented those core documents for feedback from both the I R C as well as interested members of the public. We took that information back and we did make some changes to the documents that you now see before you, which are the ones that we're presenting here for for adoption to go forward. So that was the process that was outlined. So then we'll go on to the next slide, please. And the core of all of this, the main document that we spent the most time on is statement of work. And this is where we clearly outline the duties and responsibilities for the demographic services provider. And again, the important point here is provision of demography, I'll read this at the top, demographic services and support of the I R C's goal to fairly and accurately draw supervisory districts that ensure residents have the ability to elect appropriate representation. That's what redistricting was all about. And we're hiring somebody or a contractor here to help us in the analysis of the data that goes into that process. So the volunteer, again, we're bringing in a contractor that can help us look at data. We called out the legacy for that. Again, this is one of those vehicles that we can use to jumpstart our analysis. And so we want someone who can look at the legacy format data that can help us understand all of this information that we're going to be confronted with. It has to be somebody who's going to work with the public outreach and engagement contractor. The the two have to work as a team so that we can ensure that we get the appropriate input and facilitate this process. And of course, we're also requesting software, software that both the I R C uses as well as software that's going to be made available to the public. And as part of this process, we're also specifically calling out that we, the I R C needs to look at the appropriate vehicle for coordinated communication and and ensuring coordination for both this contractor, demographic services, as well as public outreach. So the I R C is called out as providing a point of contact to ensure that we have effective and efficient coordination and communication with this contractor. So it's a single, single point of contact within the I R C to do that. And again, this is something that the I R C needs to clarify and define as one of our next steps. Next slide, please. So the other documents that we worked on. Pricing schedule, so fixed pricing proposal, just as in the public outreach and engagement. So we broke it down in personnel, non-personnel, and then we also called out for optional tasks. Are there other things potentially that we should consider as part of this proposal? And then as needed pricing. So if there are other services beyond things that are unforeseen at this point that we still need in support of, we have, we have them provide information on those activities. The anticipated budget for this was set at two hundred thousand dollars. So go on to the next slide, please. And then there are two other documents, the evaluation criteria. And this is letting offers know how will we assess them? What are the key things that we're going to look at in terms of evaluating each offer? And so there's a minimum requirement, pass fail. And then we're looking at experience and qualifications, the personnel that are going to be involved here, as well as your technical or the technical approaches they're going to take. And then, of course, price is important. So that that is the evaluation criteria and go on to the next slide, please. Duck tailing clearly with the evaluation criteria or submittal items. So another document calls out the kinds of documents and information that need to be provided so that we can do the evaluation. So these two go hand in hand with each other under personnel experience and qualifications. Again, this is where we actually made some adjustments based on industry day. We're asking them to look over a ten year timeframe, but provide up to five specific case studies from from your past experience instead of, you know, everything over the past ten years, just give us the most pertinent, relevant information in terms of experience and qualifications. And and then again, we're requesting, again, experience and kind of a calling out of the specific technical approach that will be undertaken as well as completing a pricing schedule that that they have to provide us with. So on to the next document, please. And that's it. And so the motion again is for the I R C to approve the demographic services RFP. And because I use the same template as was approved last time, I assume that there were, there were a good step here. So with that, I'll turn it back to Chair Bame.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Inman. Thank you very much, members of the ad hoc committee. I'm going to say thank you once again to co-Vice Chair Katerina for running such a good industry day on this. And in particular, I I want to place some emphasis on what Commissioner Inman was saying about the adjustments that were made in reaction to industry day. I think that's exactly the kind of dialogue we want to have on all our business with the public. And it's much appreciated and in no small part due to the ad hoc committee's great work and vice co-chairs Katerina's wonderful leadership. Let me ask Erin first now if there are any requests from the public to speak on this item.
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item, but if any members of the public would like to address the commission, please raise your virtual hand at this time, or if you're joining by telephone, please press star nine. Not seen any requests to speak on this item, Chair Bame, thank you.
Thank you. So to move on with discussion, I I may have skipped over clarifying questions. I did, and shame on me. So before we have a motion, are there any clarifying questions or comments that commissioners wish to ask? Good, thank you for your patience. With that, let me ask if there's a motion for the I R C to approve the demographic services RFP.
So moved. Second.
Okay, well, Commissioner Garcia's second, Commissioner Inman is making the motion. Any discussion? I'll wait five more seconds because without discussion, we will move on to a vote.
I love that template.
Very good. Erin, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We'll begin with Vice Chair Katerina.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak.
Aye, great job.
Chair Bame.
Aye.
Commissioner Ponce.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye, great job, awesome.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Commissioner Servin.
Aye.
And Commissioner Inman. And that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting I. And that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. And again, thank you to the ad hoc committee and thanks to all the commissioners because I know everyone's had, have been, has been doing some great thinking about this and offered great comments in the process. So great to get to this point. We move on to item five on the agenda, the monthly budget update. Uh, there is going to be in the next item, a report from the ad hoc committee to develop a redistricting budget recommendation. They are continuing their work and including work on possible recommendations to the full commission. Before we do that, though, we'll take up this item where county staff will provide us with monthly, the monthly update on the budget as an informational item with no action needed. And again, as an informational item, we'll hear from public speakers. Then commissioners will have an opportunity to offer any clarifying questions or comments. With that, Nicole Temple is here for her regular update. We'll ask for her comments on top of the paper and move on from there. Nicole, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Bane. Uh, as you mentioned, the ad hoc committee's work is underway. So, uh, I'll take a page from Commissioner Inman's book and my update is going to be very similar to, uh, the format that it was used last month, just briefly highlighting the expenditures that have occurred over the past month as an informational update for the commission. About sixty-seven thousand dollars has been spent with projected spending of just over forty-one thousand dollars, leaving the IRC with more than six hundred and forty-one thousand remaining. All expenditures over the past month were anticipated and there have been no changes to budgeted amounts. The largest expenditure of about ninety thousand is for the contracted services of external legal counsel from last November through February of this year. The commission has discussed this contract previously and the budget ad hoc committee is reviewing the budgetary impact of any changes. Next, we look at expenditures for IT equipment, which includes the monthly charges from the county's IT contractor for the commissioner's laptops, network access and email addresses. The actual and projected amounts combined, which is about nine thousand, are the total monthly charges through March. As noted in the staff report, these costs are expected to increase based on new requirements from the county for network security, for remote access to county systems for commissioners. So what that really means is that we'll be adding, uh, VPN, virtual private network access to your laptops to allow commissioners to update your passwords without having to come into a county location to do that. And also we'll be adding, uh, some sort of a security token that would be used to create a unique passcode that will be required in the future for you to be able to log into your county laptop. So since the staff report was published, we've received a little more information from IT about this. Um, we expect a one-time cost of about three hundred dollars and monthly fees to increase in the range of about two hundred dollars, but possibly more. Uh, exact amounts are still unknown at this time, uh, and a specific implementation date is not yet final. But we've been told spring of twenty twenty-one. So more information will be included in the next monthly budget update. And if we need to send, um, email communication or, or any directions to commissioners, we'll certainly do that. Next, we move to the IT other category, which includes the projected monthly charges for the Zoom service hosting the commission's virtual meetings through April. That's about two hundred and fifty, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then moving to translation and interpretation, projected expenditures of nearly nine thousand are for translation of commission meeting agendas up to the meeting of April eighth, as well as other content, um, as required by the California Elections Code. And lastly, the staff report includes information about three staff positions added to the redistricting team, a program coordinator, operations research analyst and administrative analyst, too, um, are being added by the county to support the redistricting team in achieving the commission's goals. And they'll begin work in early May. With that, that concludes the monthly budget status update to the commission for ongoing transparency and accountability over the use of public funds. Subject to your questions, I'll now turn back to Chairman Bane.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Before we open the floor for commissioner questions, comments, I want to ask Erin if there are any requests from the public to speak on this item.
Thank you, Chair Bane. We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item. But if any members of the public would like to address the commission, please press star nine or raise your virtual hand at this time and we will call on you. I'm not seeing any virtual hands, Chair Bane. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. So with that, and commissioners, please bearing in mind that our next agenda item allows for issues related to broader matters to be raised. Are there any clarifying questions or comments on the presentation and staff report you just heard? Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Thank you, Chair Bane. Yes, I have, um, a few questions and I would say they're mostly clarifying questions. And if any of them should be deferred to the, you know, uh, committee update, uh, that, that will be fine, too. Um, I, I guess my first question has to do with the IT equipment category. And, and this is, um, I, I went back and looked at some of the previous monthly budget updates. And, um, I could have asked this question before, but I'm asking it tonight. It says that, um, the actual monthly costs are higher than anticipated, um, than when the budget was originally developed because of the, as a result of actual equipment needed. And I'm curious what additional equipment was needed that you had not, um, projected? Cause the, anyway, could you, I'm curious about that.
I'm happy, I'm happy to address that. Um, there, there were some estimates made of what the cost for the equipment would be and the actual costs turned out to be a little bit higher than what we originally estimated. It wasn't that the, the equipment was different, it was the costs were different for the.
Okay, yeah, got it. Um, and then on IT website of that category, it says actual costs may be higher than budgeted, uh, depending upon a website change is requested by the commission. But that, um, so two things, I think it's still showing zero. So we haven't had any website costs, um, yet, correct?
Yes, correct. That's correct.
And then.
The cost that, yeah, yes, that's correct.
So, so at this point, we're not, we're not over or under budget. We haven't actually spent any money in that category yet.
Correct.
Okay, good. Um, and then, uh, clarification question on training. Uh, that's a, a, a pretty negligible amount that's in the budget right now. Is that because, um, if we do training that is provided by in-house county staff, let's say by the community, um, communications office or something, there will actually be no cost to the commission for that? Or do I, do I understand that correctly in, in the same way that, um, staffing from the county doesn't really count as, um, an expense in our budget?
Yes, if, if county staff is providing the training, then yes, that, that's, that's correct. There's a nominal amount budgeted there in anticipation that there may be some costs for training, um, that commissioners would incur from outside organizations or that staff might incur from outside organizations. But, uh, as to the appropriateness of that amount, I believe that's the ad hoc committee's purview to look at. Yeah.
Okay, great. And then my last question has to do with staffing. Um, and we, I think we currently have, uh, or we, we have had in the budget four FTEs. I guess I would, I, I can't remember what the language is that the county uses, but for full-time equivalents.
Yes.
With the projection of adding three more people. And I appreciate, um, the information about the three new, um, staff members. But it's a little bit hard for me to understand all of that because I, I went back and looked and I actually am not clear what the four, what we have currently. What are those four full-time staff members? I, I think I, I saw that we have, uh, I think it's maybe Barbara is a half, halftime. I mean, there, I don't actually see, well, can you just, can you provide some detail on that?
Yes, and, and I thi- I think the key there is, is full-time equivalent, that the FTE. Because we do have more staff that are working on the project, but they're not necessarily working full-time. So we, um, we have a total of, of seven, with the three new staff people, it would be a total of seven FTEs. Um, and that is myself working full-time and then the remaining six people on the staff. I, I have to, I have to do this math. I'm sorry, I'm trying to do math in my head. And that's not, not a good idea, but the remaining people on the staff are working, uh, partial time then, yes. And I, I'd be happy to send additional information, um, to the commission in more detail about that after the meeting.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I think, I, I think that I would like to have more discussion around staffing and under, and kind of understanding, um, who that is and what that looks like. It's, um, and I, so I was under the impression with these three new, um, staff people that actually we were going to be getting three full-time equivalent staff people. But maybe that's not exactly what, what this means.
Uh, no, you, we will have three new positions. They just are not here yet. They're in background process. Um, we hope at a future meeting when they're all on board, we will actually, um, do a presentation of all the staff. So you guys get to see all of our faces and I know you guys see my face and you see Nicole's, but Lizeth, Angela, and then Maritza is also, um, part of the staffing that helps the IRC. So we were thinking as soon as those three come on board, we can do a presentation. And, and like Nicole said, we can send that information of how it break, breaks down. We do also have others, um, support, um, some other administrative support that do just a little bit of work, uh, maybe taking notes, maybe doing some research. You know, like if the, the commission asks, what do other commissions do? Um, some of that is also paired out to other staff that work with us. Raylene, I think you guys all know who's done some. Yeah, so she doesn't come to the meetings and, um, but she's someone that kind of supports us. So we definitely can, um, send that information. But we do want to present all the staff at a future meeting once those three come on board.
Thank you. And so my la- I, I, it's more of a comment than it is a question. As I was reading about these three new staff members, um, one being sort of a, and I'm not looking at my notes. One sort of being an outreach coordinator, someone who's going to, um, help with the logistics of, of the public input meetings. I think a demographer coordinator, and I forget, and then a sort of a, uh, administrator that would be, um, helping the project, one, the project manager, I can't remember. Um, I had, I was just generally wondering about the need, perhaps for those, um, roles? If, I, I guess I was trying to figure out, well, how much of that work is going to be done by a county staff person versus the outreach coordinator? And so maybe that's a conversation, I mean, the outreach consultant, sorry, that we're going to hire. And I, I don't know that we have to have this conversation now, but I'm a little bit, um, I, I, I just feel like I would like to understand better how the decisions are being made about staffing us and, um, um, what they're actually going to be doing, so.
I can, I can definitely share that. So with the project coordinator, so these position titles are standard county titles. So we can't change that, like, there's probably better wording that we can do, but we have to use with them because these are county staff that after they no longer work in redistricting will actually be absorbed. So we had to, you know, that, that's the, the other part of it. So the project coordinator, um, would really support and manage the team with Nicole and myself, with, uh, Barbara being our executive lead, the operational research analyst. So 10 years ago, we had, um, Rich Grubman, who was the mastermind of tracking the maps. And, um, that, um, even with a demographer and even with the, um, with the software, we actually need to do a lot of documentation. And it's really cra- it's gonna, uh, from what I understand from Nicole, it's going to be boring for us. Uh, but, because we're going to be like lot one, two, five, six, eight, nine, 10.
Very detailed.
Very detailed. And, um, that's what the operational research analyst. And then also, um, that person can really speak the language of the demographer. Um, you know, I just had a conversation with a, a GIS manager and I, I was lost a little early on. So that's kind of what that person will help us with. Oh, of course, in doing other research, and that's why we picked not a GIS analyst. We picked someone that could do, uh, many of our operational research analysts also are demographers. So it was kind of an open-ended one. And then our analyst, too, um, is what we have on the team now. They will, that person will provide contracting because we will need to have administrators for the contracts because there's site visits involved, there's monthly invoice review. I, I was a contract analyst, so I kind of know that work and it's very tedious and you have to make those, um, you know, just follow the, those, those things. And then also to support, all of us will be supporting the ad hocks, you know, for, you know, those research type request. Um, trying to make this the best Zoom experience possible, you know, just those types of things. There's a lot of things that we've been wanting to do that we haven't been able to do. And so that's where the, the new positions will help us. And then, um, like websites, there's so many things that we would love to do, but we can't do it with our current, um, with our current staffing at this point.
Thank you. Thanks.
Commissioner Diaz.
Yes, thank you for, uh, for the report and for including the job descriptions. I was reading through each of them and I had very similar questions, uh, to Rosette's that most of which have been answered already. Um, but I also wanted to ask, so just clarify that Barbara will be supervising these three staff positions? Or will it be a combination of you and Barbara? Or how's that going to work?
Sure. So the way I, I report to Barbara, she's my boss, she will always be my boss before and after. And so between Nicole and I, and then the project coordinator, us three will be managing the team. And so that's kind of how we, we handle it currently. Both Nicole and I manage the team. And so that's kind of what we're thinking, the third person will also help us. As we've learned, we may have to change things up, um, a- about supervision. But, uh, that's kind of how we're, we're managing the team now, is that us, uh, our small but mighty team will continue to support the IRC. And, uh, we try to make it as seamless as possible. So, uh, handling all requests through Barbara is one of the best ways to do it. Um, or if it needs to be Nicole or, or, or myself, that's also helpful. But that's kind of how we're handling the team.
And then, um, also for, I, I guess, again, this goes back to one of Rosette's clarified questions about how these positions will work together with our outreach consultant and our demographer and making sure that, you know, there's no, uh, that they're seamless, that that connection is seamless and there's no duplication of effort. I think that that's a concern. Um, and, you know, I, I think that, you know, this will probably be brought up during discussion um, about how the communication's going to happen between these positions and the IRC. Um, and how are we all going to work together to be on the same page? Um, so, um, that, that was just a, a point that I was concerned with. And then the other one was a translation and interpretation. Um, could you clarify what base rate or range you were looking at for the potential increase in cost? Because it wasn't in the staff report, but I've seen it somewhere else stated, but I just wanted to clarify.
Uh, the, I don't think we've had a change of cost. And we actually, I think at our earlier staff, I, I don't know if we have, but we definitely have, it's like a, a per word charge. We actually have cost savings in agenda translations because we noticed we had some boilerplate language that was listed. And, um, it's actually a lot of, a lot of words. So we were a- actually able to save cost. We did not make any changes to the budget per se because the ad hoc is currently reviewing that. But, um, and then plus, if there's special meetings, it may not, it may just balance out. But it was, I think, Nicole a savings of, how much, three hundred?
It's, it's a few hundred to a thousand dollars per agenda, depending on the length of the agenda. But it's, it's, uh, it's from, yes, not having to translate that, that boilerplate language every time. And, and once we standardized it, then we can, we can repeat it. And, and, you know, we're, we're about efficiency, so that's, that was a good news for us.
And, and we're happy to hear the, the contract for, with, with Hannah. It's a BPA, uh, a blanket purchase agreement that we have with the county. So they have, they just tell us this is the rate, um, per word and then the interpretation, which we haven't utilized, um, yet. But they, it's all just within a contract.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Inman.
Yes, uh, thank you. So, uh, just, uh, to understand these positions, were these anticipated that we're going to hire them? Or are these, you know, we staffed up and now we realized, you know, we need additional resources? Because the explanation I heard is you knew based on twenty ten that you were going to need people to do these things. So I, I guess I was just asking, were these anticipated or are these, now we need additional resources because we're understaffed?
Um, in the beginning, it was, we did not know exactly what we needed. Um, I have to say, I was an analyst, so I thought I would be able to handle the mapping, you know, just those things. But as we move forward with, um, the direction of. But as we move forward with the direction of the IRC, we just realized that we we really do need additional support to 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 carry out the level of work that we do and the quickness that it's required. If 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 we, you know, if and and with the additional support with the ad hocks and additional, you know, help that is needed, we just thought it would be good to bring additional staff to help support the team. And we're very excited of having them help out with us. We are, we we kind of thought, what would we need? And one was definitely a contract analyst. And then one we thought would be good if we actually had someone that had an expertise in that. 10 years ago, we did not have that expertise. The person I'm mentioning, I can't remember what Rich's position was, maybe he was an analyst. But, you know, we did think that was one position. I don't know if we, we thought maybe we might be able to borrow someone. So I think it's, it was just kind of, we didn't know exactly what we needed. But now we have a better sense of the work that is required. And so we wanted, it does take a while to bring on county positions. And with the way we were working, we wanted them on board before all the work started.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Ponce.
Yeah, just a quick question regarding translation and interpretation services. And this gets to the issue of public hearings. And I'm just concerned or about those that are challenged in hearing. And are we going to have signage that capability available during public hearings? And will that be a cost associated with that?
Um, we do have that capability. So we use the same contractor that, I don't know if any of you have seen the COVID-19 our briefings that we give weekly, we have the same access. Nicole, did we add that as a, as in our budget for that part? I don't know. I know we did languages, but I don't know if we added that.
I don't, I don't, I have to go back and check. I don't, I don't believe so, but we we can certainly discuss that with the ad hoc committee and and recommendations that they may make for budgetary changes too.
Go ahead.
I will say the remainder of my comment till we get to the ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Co-Vice Chair Catherine.
I just wanted to clarify, since I'm on the ad hoc committee for the Outreach RFP, that the public meeting translation is included in the budget for the ad hoc, for the outreach consultant. So the county is covering meeting, meeting translations for our regular, regular meetings and special meetings. But anything related to public meetings will be covered by the consultant. And that's in their budget. That's what they're supposed to be providing as one of the services. I hope that clarifies it for you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Liberty. Good discussion. Moving on, our next agenda item is item number six, an update from the ad hoc committee to develop a redistricting budget recommendation and a discussion of forming a standing budget and finance committee. As a reminder, this ad hoc committee was formed with the purpose, quote, "to review the budgetary impact of changes to the contract with legal counsel, to develop recommendations for an update to the redistricting budget as a basis for a request to the Board of Supervisors, and to consider the creation of a standing committee and return to the commission for consideration." For this update, I'll be turning to Co-Vice Chair Katerina for a presentation. Then we'll have an opportunity to hear from the public and then commissioners to ask clarifying questions and comments. As I understand it for today, and I'll look to Co-Vice Chair Katerina to confirm, this is an informational item at this point and no action proposed for the commission to take today. But I just want to express that's my understanding at the moment. So, Co-Vice Chair Katerina, please.
Sorry, I was not muted, unmuted. So that's correct. This is an informational item only. I'll give you a quick update on what what our ad hoc committee has been up to. And and then we'll talk a little bit about what our options are and what we need to consider if we decide to to form a standing committee. And the ad hoc committee is really looking for input from the commissioners on this topic. And and we'll, we'll get into that once I finish the update. So we have been meeting quite a bit with staff. I I have to thank staff, Nicole and Barbara and Liberty, also our legal team for providing information that we need to have in order to prepare the most robust budget. Our current focus as we left our last meeting was to conduct research on other commission budgets. And the staff has done frankly, an excellent job providing feedback from up to date now for different commissions. And in order to maintain a positive working relationship, we're not going to share with you exactly what the other commissions are doing unless it is actually public, publicly available. So some commissions have not disclosed their budgets, but they were able to provide feedback to to staff. And we will be using that to to finalize our budget. And hopefully that will be at the next meeting. We are continuing to work on the budget. We are looking at invoices as they come in and talking to staff about what they are seeing and what what their expectations are. And and finally, we we've started talking about whether or not we want to form a standing finance and or budget committee and what that might look like. So, so the next steps as part of this update are to seek IRC approval of a revised budget, which I believe we'll be able to provide to you at the next meeting. And that will in turn lead to additional funding that we need to request from the Board of Supervisors. And finally, the last part of our purpose is to is to decide whether or not to recommend a standing finance and or budget committee. So if we could go to the next slide, we will talk a little bit about what a standing finance budget committee might look like. Thank you. So, and I'm sorry, the text is so small. I need my glasses. I'm going to have to squint. My bad. So what we're looking at, as we talk and think about our standing budget or finance committee is, what is the purpose? And so I want you all to think about what is the purpose that you would like to see if we do decide to stand up a a permanent committee? And 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 a suggestion is perhaps to provide financial oversight of IRC business. I think we all take our responsibility very seriously and want to make sure that the public's money is being spent appropriately. Another, another thought might be to clearly establish and maintain public confidence in the IRC so that the public can see that we are taking this responsibility seriously. Another, another item of discussion would be around what are the duties and responsibilities of a standing committee? So they may be tracking budget and financial issues. They may be developing financial procedures and processes. And they may be reviewing consultant and legal invoices. Another issue is how often might they meet? A suggestion might be once a month because these meetings do need to be publicly noticed. And to reduce the amount of time and effort, a once a month meeting is likely to be, likely to be recommended. But we'd love to hear your thoughts on on that as well. Another item to consider is how much does it cost? Because we know there are costs to translate our agendas. There are also potentially additional legal costs associated with standing a new committee. And and we're looking somewhere between 1,300 to 2,700 dollars. And and potentially with live interpretation adding a potentially up to 2,000 dollars. And then another thing I think is important to talk about is since this is going to be a permanent committee versus an ad hoc temporary committee, how are we going to select the members? Will we appoint, will we volunteer, we accept volunteers? Or will we consider nominations and or and self-nominations? So those are all kind of the bigger picture discussion points that we want you to consider and and hopefully give us some feedback on today so that we can better prepare our recommendation at the next meeting. So we are considering recommending a standing finance and or budget committee. Next slide, please. So one of the things that you might be asking yourself is why do we need to have a standing committee? We certainly want to recognize the importance of maintaining the independent nature of the commission. And we are deeply indebted to our county staff for providing assistance. But the direction for all of our business should come from the commission. And we need to make sure that that is clear to the public in order to maintain that independence. We are moving into more of an operational role as we work to bring on board our two contractors and additionally to manage, I don't want to say manage legal counsel, but to work with legal counsel. There are additional financial decisions that will need to be made going forward. We, we know that the budget is fluid. We are in an unknown situation regarding our budgetary needs. And and all you need to do is look at the staffing or cartons to see that there are additional needs, you know, that we are, we are facing. And that perhaps weren't seen, you know, at the, at the origination of of the of the commission. We also know that we need to have financial oversight for the review of our contractor invoices as described in both ad hoc committees' reports and RFPs. So, so those are two things for sure that we know we are going to have as an ongoing issue. And there are, there are solutions to to meet those and we'll talk about those in a minute. But that's just another reason that we need to think about having a standing committee versus, you know, an ad hoc. We're also seeing some delays in IRC oversight regarding some of our commission business. And and this really plays to some of the items we talked about. And and that is just to have better control over the financial decisions that are impacting the IRC. And and the one example is legal contracts that were negotiated and renegotiated without frankly, our input. And we are grateful for staff and county council for taking care of this for us. But we do need to be involved in the decision-making process. So next slide there. So we've talked about this before, but what is the difference between a standing committee and an ad hoc committee? A standing committee is a permanent IRC committee. There are public meetings and there are costs and procedures and formalities that are associated with having public meetings. It likely will necessitate some type of review of our bylaws to determine whether or not any changes or amendments are needed and also allows for longer-term monitoring. Whereas an ad hoc committee is a temporary committee with a defined purpose. It typically is a limited timeframe and the meetings are not subject to Brown Act requirements. Next slide, please. And maybe you could make this one a little bit bigger, Liberty, too. Sorry. So we have, we have some options ahead of us to to consider. Instead of forming a standing committee, we could opt to continue to add ad hoc committees to deal with issues as they come up. So one example is a governance ad hoc committee that might be looking at bylaws and also perhaps establishing some procedures and policies. And this is particularly important for the directing contractor point of contacts. We are going to have to make some decisions in the future about who and what the role is going to be for the contractor point of contacts. And in addition, for financial oversight, our budget ad hoc committee is not tasked with financial oversight. So we really can't make any recommendations regarding financial oversight, although we certainly can suggest that there needs to be some additional oversight done. And this comes into play as we bring our contractors on board, reviewing contractor invoices, keeping track of expenses and legal invoices as well. So there's one, one option is to continue with our ad hoc committees. A second option is to form a standing finance committee, which would include budgetary considerations. And it could be a permanent committee, and this is very typical of of commissions. And the establishment also may result in changes in bylaws again. So we might have to call up an ad hoc on governments, governance, if we don't include that as as part of our our mission, if you will. A a third option is to form a standing finance and governance or finance and administration committee. And that committee would provide financial input as well as including some of the governance function as it relates to establishing procedures and bylaws updates. And then, you know, you guys are pretty smart. I bet you have some ideas. So what are some other options that that you are thinking about as we talk about these issues? And what are the kinds of issues that are coming up? So at that point, I'd like to open it up, send it back to Chair Bain. But Liberty, we may want to go back and revisit some of these slides to to kind of keep us focused on on what what to talk about.
Okay, very good. So yeah, I think with commissioners' approval, we'll just leave the shared screen up and work from that so we can flip easily. I already see a hand or two, but before we turn to commissioners, because I want to keep with our usual structure, Erin, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bain. We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item. But if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, they may raise their virtual hand now or press star nine if they're participating via telephone. I'm not seeing any raised hands, Chair Bain. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So we'll open the floor up for clarifying questions and comments, starting with Commissioner Chen.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Commissioner Katerina, that cost that you mentioned, is that per meeting cost? Or is that the cost of the entire, you know, active commission time?
It's an estimated per meeting cost. So it is important to think about how many meetings we're going to have, right?
Okay. A couple of comments. I mean, one, I think, given the things that you said the committee would do, I I would think that we could use staff to do those same, accomplish those same things if we gave the staff maybe more direction than we've been giving them. I don't think we need a committee to do that, but I think we could give the staff direction, have the staff fulfill those roles. The other thought, and I'm not sure it's possible, is if we had a single commissioner that we would delegate, say invoice review to or something like that versus having to have a committee do it. I'm not sure if that's possible, but those are the two thoughts I had.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other comments, questions, responses to Co-Vice Chair Katerina, request for input? Okay, I have Co-Vice Chair Garcia and then Commissioner Chen. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
We go to the slide with all of the options on it. I guess it was the last slide. Thank you. So actually, I I think Commissioner Chen had some interesting ideas about, well, the one that I think is kind of interesting to think about is it could one commissioner be assigned to review the invoices from the contractors? And I'm wondering if that might be folded into the point of contact, the commissioner who's going to serve as point of contact. I I think we have to have a larger discussion just about the whole oversight issue. But what I would say here is that the option three, which would have one committee responsible for budgeting, finance, governance and bylaws, to me doesn't seem like a very viable option. That would be something that I I would not be in favor of. I I believe, I do believe that we might need an ad hoc committee to look at bylaws. And I mean, it And I mean, it has come up in some of the ad hoc committees that I've served on that we don't have some, there are a lot of processes and procedures that are ill-defined, if defined at all. And it, it keeps sort of cropping up. So I do think, however, that it may be advisable and it's not at all unusual for a commission or a board to have a budget and finance committee that performs on a regular basis oversight, even if the staff is doing a lot of the sort of hands-on work.
Thank you. No, I appreciate.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make that comment.
That's very helpful.
I think Commissioner Diaz, next.
Yes, thank you. As a member of the ad hoc committee, I am very curious to also, you know, hear all the commissioners' input on, on these different options. But I, I also wanted to get some clarification in case you had some questions about the reason for having oversight combined with the finance, because as we move forward, we're seeing a lot of ongoing cost uncertainties, right? And, and our work doesn't seem to, there doesn't seem to be an endpoint. So we have, we have to have some kind of standing committee to really review all of these ongoing costs. And I think it's in the, in the best interest of the IRC to at least, you know, provide the public with that opportunity to see how the, these, these expenses are being managed. And even if we do have county staff, you know, doing all of the logistical procedural things that they need to do to process these invoices, we still get to see those invoices come through. What's been happening is we see them after the fact and we're trying to backpedal and understand what occurred in the budget. And, and so to prevent that, you know, having some kind of formal structure is going to be really important moving forward, especially as our expenses get more complicated with the, you know, two contractors we're onboarding and our legal counsel as well. So I just want to make that comment and kind of put that out there. And we really, I had to reread our bylaws actually, and there's nothing, I mean, we might have to consider, I don't know, I think it's up there at ad hoc to look at the bylaws. So I don't know if we want to make that in addition to a standing committee, but I would, I would love both actually. And there's nothing preventing us, as it stands right now, from forming any kind of or any type of standing committee. And we can call it whatever we want. But we, it has to really, you know, we have to really define what those functions are. So I'm going to continue listening to everyone else's input because this is, this is really important. So thank you for listening.
Thank you for that. Other commissioners? Commissioner Pons. I think you're still muted.
Yeah, thanks for the briefing. First and foremost, I think the primary responsibility of either option of an ad hoc or a standing committee is financial oversight. I agree with Commissioner Chen about the duties and the roles and responsibilities being shared with the staff, especially the contractor's point of contact could double as the invoice auditor and have a commission to support the staff in doing that. The last thing is whatever this committee would do, I think it should dovetail with the audit process. I think there's an ongoing audit process that may happen every three months quarterly. And this commission would, I mean, this committee would also support that audit process and report their findings to the auditors to make sure the books sort of balance. So any feedback on how this could dovetail with the audit process would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you for that. And again, I apologize for taking time. It's, keeping the screen up gives me the way my gallery works, limited visibility. Commissioner Larson, please.
Well, speaking as the third member of the ad hoc committee, let me say one of the things that we discussed a lot is the independence requirement for our whole effort that we're, we're doing. The public perception of our independence is really important. The public has to know that we're not county employees, we're not following a built-in agenda, we don't have any axes to grind. We really are independent, as I am, and I suspect that all my fellow commissioners are too. And I, I think having a standing committee of this sort does give us a leg to stand on in terms of really being independent. And that's really necessary here. We're getting into some really troubled waters, I, I suspect, if we don't. Because we don't want to have someone coming up eight months from now when we've delivered our lines and saying, hey, you purposely have done this just to keep the status quo. That's not what we're going to do, but that may be what the perception is. So that's my argument. Public perception of what our commission is doing is, and their real independence is the issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Inman. Thank Commissioner Pons. So Commissioner.
Yes. So our question about a standing committee. First, I do support financial oversight standing committee. I think it's very important and it should be established. I don't think we want to make it overly broad, though. It's for financial oversight. Some of these other functions such as a single point of contact or looking at bylaws and so on are going to require other ad hoc committees or additional action by the IRC. But for a standing committee, one thing I wanted to get clarification on, can a standing committee actually pass motions that are binding for the IRC make decisions? Like an ad hoc right now cannot make a decision that can make a recommendation. Can a standing committee actually conduct business and make decisions as in, you know, make a decision about to spend some money or something without full IRC, without a full motion coming back to the IRC? And I could see that being efficient, right? This is a good way potentially to conduct business, but I just wanted to understand that point if somebody could help me with that.
Well, that's above my pay grade.
Unless, unless the ad hoc is specifically discussed, I'd like to see if council has anything to say about that.
So a, a standing committee still would not be able to act on behalf of the full IRC. It's going to be subject to different procedural requirements, the Brown Act being the most notable. But the full IRC vote of a quorum of the IRC is still going to be required to take action.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pons, I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to speak again or not.
I do. I want to address the issue of independence versus reliance. I think there's a distinction between the two. I, I think we can still be independent and executing our roles and responsibilities and our duties and not be totally reliant on the staff and doing what they're supposed to do. Now, so far we've stood up committees and we've had the staff to support us. But if you look at this differently, maybe we could allow the staff to do their job and maybe embed a committee member into the staff process to help them. And that gives us what I consider to be the oversight without standing up another body to do something that maybe the staff can do. Because we've just had a very rich discussion about staff roles and responsibilities and the amount of money that they are being paid. And so I would imagine those duties, roles and responsibilities can be expanded to include this element of the commission's responsibility. So let's look at it as maybe taking someone from the commission who has this, you know, the gravitas and financial, you know, oversight and just put them and embed them into the staff to say, look, let me help you do this. I would be the oversight for what you are doing. And then I can make sure that there's an independent eye or set of eyes to make sure it's being done correctly, ethically and legally.
Thank you for that. Not seeing any other requests to speak, let me invite the ad hoc committee to offer any closing comments or additional comments. Covice chair Caterina?
Thank you. Thank you. Sonia, I'll, I'll, I'll be quick, but then Sonia, if you want to step in, that's fine. So this has been very helpful for us because we are trying to, you know, narrow our focus and, and put towards something that, that the commission is in support of. And we needed to hear back from you to, to gauge, you know, your level of interest and your level, level of concern. So I appreciate all the feedback and, and, and we got some new ideas that we can take back to staff and discuss to see if some of those might be an option going forward.
Very good. Um, let me ask Commissioner Diaz and then covice chair Garcia.
Um, I actually would love to hear from covice chair Garcia first and then I'll comment.
Very kind. Covice chair.
Thank you. Um, and I forgot to mention before, I thought your presentation, Amy was outstanding, very clear and really laid out all the points quite, quite forcefully. So I have a question, however, about the point of contact that you've mentioned here in, in this last slide about, and the options for discussion. Is that something that your ad hoc committee is looking at? I'm, I'm, I, I'd like to know when or how that particular item is going to be figured out. We don't actually, we, it's in our, in both of the RFPs that have now been approved. And we're already in the process of, of, you know, we're in the, in process for the outreach consultant. And we will soon have both of our, you know, contractors onboard. And what we need to do is identify a commissioner who will be the point of contact for each of those contractors. Yet we don't have a process for identifying that, that point of contact. And we actually don't have quote unquote, a job description for that point of contact. So I'm just curious, one, is that something that your ad hoc committee is tasked with working on? I only, I ask that because it's here on the slide. And if not, when are we going to, when or how are we going to figure that out? Or, or who is responsible then for doing that?
So it is not part of our purpose or our mission. However, in, in the process of developing the budgets and working through the financial issues ahead of us, we know that we do need it. And so, so when we talk about what we need to do in the future, we know we need, we know we're going to have changes to the budget. We know we're going to need to identify point of context. We know we need to establish some, some procedures in terms of how we work with staff and how staff works with us and who's responsible for what and who communicates with whom. So, so those things we know, but unfortunately, it's not part of our, our, our mission. So, so the, the understanding is that whether we form a standing finance committee or another ad hoc to address financial oversight, it will be addressed in, in one of those two vehicles in the future. And so the idea is on May, I think it's 13th, our next meeting, we can make a decision about whether or not we have a standing committee or we do additional ad hocs. And, and so those are things that we're going to be working on putting together. And that point of contact will need to be addressed in, 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 in those, in those, whatever those end to committees are going to be, whether it's an ad hoc or a standing committee.
Okay. And, and I, the only last thing I would say is that it seems to me that your ad hoc committee has really had a big task in front of you and that there's, oh, that once you finish the work that you've been charged to do, that, that, you know, that oversight and you know, basically just all the review that you all have been doing should probably still continue to be done. So in my mind, I think there's a very strong rationale for standing up a standing budget and finance committee that, you know, sort of more narrowly focused on, on budget and finance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Diaz.
Yes, thanks. Thank you. I wanted to also address Commissioner Pons's idea. I, I really appreciate that idea. We hadn't thought about that yet of a, just a single commissioner being involved in all of the processing of the finance and oversight, um, working with county staff. As we know, there are, you know, some new positions that the county, you know, showed us the job descriptions for that definitely might overlap with what we're talking about. But I do want to remind the commission that standing committees are a great tool for public transparency because we all, you know, standing committees, you know, have to abide by Brown Act. And, and one of the benefits of that is to, you know, show the public how we're making these decisions. So you kind of look at it as a dual purpose of, you know, oversight and, and, and also, you know, making this information publicly available and discussing it in a public forum. And what the benefit of I've had of working an ad hoc committee, just in the brief time that I had this opportunity, is that there's a lot of complex things to, to consider and it helps to have more than just one person doing, being the eyes and the ears. And so that, that's one benefit of actually having a formal standing committee. But I, I do, you know, would like to take that, your idea back to our ad hoc to discuss further.
Great. Thank you. Any other thoughts? All right. Let me just offer some comments to wrap up. I, I do, I would like to hear more from the ad hoc committee the next time you all brief on visions for the, under the various options for the full commission and its role in these various options. As Hillary just mentioned, the standing committee, while it can do a lot, can't make the decisions. And to go on to the public transparency point that many, many of you rightly raised in the discussion, I would want to address the point, I think one commissioner mentioned about is, are we creating more work for the public by saying, if you really want to see the full picture, you have to go attend the standing committee and then also a full commission meeting on what the standing committee is recommending? I can see it either way. I, I mean, that is a very neutral point, but I did want to bring that out very specifically as well as various other points. I, I would argue this commission has actually done some very good work. And I'm thinking the RFP process in itself as a full commission and take advantage of all those talents. There is no question in my mind that a standing committee or another ad hoc committee could ease the burden and save some of the time for a full commission meeting. But that comes with additional complications and how the two connect. Again, I'm not trying to take a side one way or the other. It's just that you all have done such a great job thinking through options and developing options. And I think you've really shined a light on some key issues that wouldn't have been considered otherwise. I'd love to keep shining on different aspects of it. To that end, I'd also say some of the comments on point of contact work, on what the staff is actually doing, on what we've seen that has worked well, as what has not worked well, would all be worth considering. On what we've seen that has worked well, as what has not worked well, would all be worth considering. I would ask you to take a look, uh, or at least think a little bit about establishing procedures and processes, perhaps by an ad hoc committee, is some of the things you've mentioned on the slide before us right now. There's a lot of latitude for that to be established by the chair. I think you all know my style enough to know I would want those kind of procedures visible and ideally blessed by the full commission. But again, I'm thinking about what's the best way to get through that preparation, that discussion and that enshrinement of the, of revised or improved processes. So it's a long way of saying, keep up the good work. Look forward to hearing the next set of options. Thanks very much for the discussion. Thanks to all the commissioners for the discussion. And I would urge all commissioners to keep thinking about this as we approach at least a decision on, uh, an immediate next step. And on that end, my final word on this, I think Co-Vice Chair Katerina put it just right. Whether we establish a standing committee or established a revised mandate for this ad hoc or transform it into something that's looking at some of these ideas that are on the screen now. I, I would like to see us take some action at our next meeting to keep the discussion going because I think this ad hoc will probably be fulfilling its current mission to that end. Good?
No.
All right. Excellent. Thanks again for the time. Thanks for everyone's patience as we move along. Moving on to item seven. An opportunity now for the commissions remaining ad hoc committees to provide very brief reports and updates. Again, we'll have the presentation, we'll hear from the public, and then we'll have an opportunity for commissioners to ask clarifying questions and offer comments. Again, no action to be taken. I'll respectfully ask for your understanding if we have to impose any time limits, but I think we're doing reasonably well on time tonight. So with that, we'll just begin with the ad hoc committee for the Public Outreach and Engagement Services RFP. As you remember, you'll remember this ad hoc committee is committed to draft the RFP that was approved at our last meeting. Congratulations again. And I'll turn back again, I think, to Co-Vice Chair Katerina. Are you presenting on this?
Sure, if you'll have me.
Look forward to it.
It's a quick one. So, so as you all know, we did submit our, uh, RFP, our final RFP, and it was approved. Thank you all for approving it. You know, what we've been working on these last couple of meetings have been to finalize the evaluation criteria that are actually, it's the spreadsheet that the county uses to help them pinpoint the top, um, offers. We did have our RFP posted on the 12th of April and we had our pre-proposal conference. Submissions are due and the SEC will be formed in the month of April and we will have a review at, at probably at the end of June with, with the SEC's recommend, I'm sorry, end of May, beginning of June with the SEC's recommendation. So that's very quick. And we, we will still be an official ad hoc, I believe, until the IRC finalizes the SSC's recommendations, just in case there are questions, but our work is essentially over. We would just be, um, around to help out with the, uh, any questions. And, and certainly we can help out with the point of contact discussion as well as when that comes up, but that's it for me.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Erin, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item, but if any members of the public would like to address the commission, please press star nine or click raise hand now and we will call on you to speak. Do not see any requests to speak on this item, Chair Bame.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any clarifying questions or comments for this ad hoc? Very good. Um, thanks again to the ad hoc for being available and for thinking through things like point of contact. Much appreciated. The next report is from the ad hoc committee on commissioner training. For that, we'll have a brief update from Commissioner Pons. As a reminder, their purpose was to refine in detail a list of training topics, develop a recommended plan for future agendas in coordination with County Staffing Council, and third, develop a recommended timeline to complete specified training projects and deliverables. Commissioner Pons.
Plan has been implemented and executed and today is the demonstration to go live. And if the commission approves of the go-live demonstration, the training ad hoc committee will stand down because the training continuum will be in place. So if the staff is ready to demonstrate, uh, please proceed.
Angela, you felt perfect. Angela, do you want to take us through this? If you are listening, you're on mute.
Hi, yes, this is Angela. Uh, thank you everyone for having me speak today. Sorry, I don't usually talk, so it took me a minute to find the unmute button. But yes, um, thank you for again, having me demonstrate the IRC training continuum website today. But we can go through this quickly and again, I'll be ready for any questions if you have any. So, starting off, let's see. So included on the website, uh, we, I know, um, Commissioner Pons had, um, just had spoken about this during the last meeting, but included on the website is a brief welcome message, um, including a mission statement, a note to the public regarding training cost, a short instructional message on how to navigate the site, as well as the use of hyperlinks with a collapse and expand function of the training topics. This is what the collapsed page preview looks like. Um, all of the training topics are hidden. You see the different phases that are part of the training continuum, which is the orientation phase, the education phase, the implementation phase, as well as the final phase, um, which is, uh, the adoption phase. And here is, uh, what the page looks like once it is expanded. And so all training topics and the corresponding links and their details. So this includes like timestamps, uh, PowerPoint presentations, CRC handout pages. All of those details are shown once you click the expand page or expand all option. And just as a note, some of the training topics that are under the education phase and the implementation phase aren't shown on, on these screenshots, just for the purposes of, uh, making sure that the, the pictures fit within the slide. Here is the introduction. Um, once we get into a closer look, we can see that there is a brief welcome message. The mission statement is, uh, indicated, um, right here. There is a note to the public regarding training costs, which in this case, it states that the commission is not responsible for any fees that are accrued, um, from the training that the public wishes to engage in. And there's also in a, um, a section on instructional message on how to navigate the page. So this is another closer look onto the first phase, which is the orientation phase, which shows, uh, the collapsed view as well as the expanded view. And so if you look at it, um, circled, um, on the bottom, you see an expand all option, which shows you all of the training details, um, once you, once you choose to see all of them. And then this is another closer look on the, uh, collapsed option, uh, for the education phase. Again, the arrows indicate what you should expect to see once you click expand all. And again, it's all of those details, um, that corresponds with the, with the training topic. And this is another example of the implementation phase, similarly, when you choose to expand all. Uh, for the last option, um, or for the last phase is the adoption phase and there's no training added yet. But we will see items added to this as we continue to move forward, which brings us to our next point. This is a growing repository and so we do expect to continue adding things on to, um, the training continuum list. And an example that we're going to be adding is the presentation that we had today from Sandag and Chula Vista, which we will be updating on to the training website, um, if the IRC agrees to move forward with it. And that concludes my, my demonstration. Are there any questions?
Before any questions, I just want to thank the staff and the committee for just your hard work. And this is, it was a concept that had been brought to life. And, you know, to Commissioner Chin, you know, you brought us some very good points, cost, you know, to the public. So that's why we put in those two asterisks to say, if you want this cost, this training at a cost, you have to pay for it and won't be burdened by the commission. The second thing is you made a recommendation regarding the sort and filter function. Well, you know, the collapse and expand function can meet that requirement if you so approve. So I think the staff has done a phenomenal job in bringing our ideas and your recommendations to life and making this concept a reality. But again, this is a so as good ideas come to your mind, just bring them to the staff because the ad hoc committee will have stood down if you approve this continuum.
Thank you, Commissioner Pons. Uh, I'll tell you, my temptation is to rule it completely out of order because I don't want this ad hoc committee to dissolve. You guys are doing too much good work. We, we need to keep you alive and, and keep going. Just keep growing this. But failing that, I think all of us appreciate the efforts. It really is an outstanding product. And again, as you so well put it, it reflects input from all the commissioners and some really, really great work by staff. So I'll much appreciate it. Uh, I do really want to remind, uh, this is the last update we'll have from this ad hoc committee, assuming this is acceptable. Uh, it does fall into the realm of, for my mind, process. So we don't, unless, uh, here differently from council of staff, we're not going to take a vote on this because I think it fulfills the mission of the ad hoc and it's already been pre-prepared and briefed very, very well. Before we go any farther though, let me ask Erin, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item, but if any member of the, uh, public would like to address the commission, please press star nine or raise your virtual hand and we will call on you. I'm not seeing any requests to speak on this item, Chair Bame.
Very good. Thank you for that. Are there clarifying questions or comments from commissioners? Very good. Uh, Commissioner, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
I just want to say that I'm, uh, incredibly impressed and I, uh, can't wait to navigate to that page and go through some of those trainings. Thank you very much. Good job.
Great stuff indeed. All right. Very good. So with the commissions, thanks. While the ad hoc will no longer be meeting as such, certainly the expertise is still there and available and I'm sure will be taken avi- advantage of. So again, thanks to the ad hoc. Speaking of folks who might want to take advantage of that former ad hoc, the next update will be from the ad hoc committee on redistricting outreach and communication. For that, we'll turn to Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Again, just as a reminder, this ad hoc was created to develop recommendations on an outreach and communications plan prior to the onboarding of a public outreach and engagement contractor and before census data is available, which we've seen and done at the last meeting, but I'll turn now to Co-Vice Chair Garcia for the update. Please.
Thank you. Um, we continue to do our work. Um, we, we did a lot of our, um, work over email since our last meeting, although we did meet, um, this past, last night, actually. Um, the League of Women Voters, um, event, our educational event did take place last week on the 15th of April. It was, um, a very well attended event. I have a little bit of, um, information for you on that. We had just a little over a hundred people who, uh, registered to attend, uh, but 84 unique viewers on that evening. The, uh, presentation, uh, was between Patricia Sennai, who is on the statewide redistricting commission and me. And, um, the, it was recorded and has been, um, posted on the two local League of Women Voters websites. And, um, apparently has also, or is going to be made a part of the League of Women Voters California, uh, resource kit, their toolbox. Very, very favorable comments. And, um, one person made an interesting suggestion, suggestion about us doing, uh, presentations in schools for, you know, teenagers who are going to be, um, I guess, voting soon. Lot of positive comments about, it was a back and forth comment, uh, format for the, the presentation. It was not a PowerPoint. So anyway, that was finally done. That was, um, our first big event. We completed, thank you to the, uh, all the commissioners who responded for the requests for bios and headshots. They've all been received and staff will be working on updating the website, uh, to incorporate those. They will also be adding, um, and request an IRC presentation and a, uh, fillable form that, uh, organizations can, um, access on our website. And then, um, staff will be circulating, um, Zoom backgrounds to the commissioners so that you may use them, you know, at, at these, at our meetings or at any other official events that you, uh, presentations that you might be doing. So you should be receiving those soon. We are, we continue to work on the power, on the official PowerPoint presentation. We met with staff this week and we're really excited about, um, the, um, presentation that they're putting together. We will, in advance of that, be, uh, we're looking at scheduling, uh, media training for the commissioners. Doing a presentation preview and then providing, uh, tips for handling Q and A when you should do one of these presentations. We are working with staff to begin scheduling an educational tour. Our idea is that we'll try to schedule, um, them by district and, and reaching out to community-based organizations and faith-based organizations and other interested stakeholders, but, but by district. More to come on that. And, uh, finalizing, um, what's called a backgrounder. So we're getting very close. It's, um, it's been a bit more complicated than, um, than we originally thought, but, um, we're very pleased with the progress that we're making. And I, I think that when we have the presentation to show you, um, I hope that you will be as well. Back to you, Chair Bame.
Thank you, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Erin, any requests from the public to speak on this item?
We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item, but if any member of the public would like to speak on, uh, this item, if you please press star nine or click raise hand and we will call on you. Not seeing any requests to speak on this item. Thanks, Chair Bame.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Diaz.
I just want to say I'm really impressed with this, uh, this ad hoc committee's work and everything it put into doing this interim communications plan. And I look forward to the trainings.
Very well. Um, I will ask commissioners to, uh, just to echo something Co-Vice Chair Garcia said about the educational tour. Uh, the more I think about it and the more I heard even tonight, the more I'm convinced that initial outreach out in districts is in individual districts is going to be very helpful. You all know your districts well. My strong, strong encouragement is to start thinking, if you haven't already, about particular groups or venues that might be good for outreach. I know county staff is ready to help uh, and has a lot of resources on this. But do be prepared. This is going to be, I think, the chance for all of us to get out and start talking a bit and hopefully inspire some of that dialogue that we've all been looking for. So I think we're well on the way towards that. I think some of the things we've discussed tonight, including this presentation, but others as well, takes us a good step forward. But it, it really is dependent on us to be thinking of ideas and options and get ready to make the presentations that we're capable of making.
Chair Bame?
Please.
Yes, I, you, you reminded me, I was actually supposed to, um, ask commissioners, um, to send any, um, ideas that they had or if they, if they knew of particular groups in their, well, it doesn't even have to be in your district anywhere in San Diego County to forward that information to staff so that we can be sure and include them when we start scheduling these, um, these educational events.
Very good. Um, Liberty, do you want those flowing to you for now or to you and Barbara? Is that the best way to do it?
Yes, to, to Barbara and, and you can add me as well.
Great. Okay. Good. And with that, okay, thank you to the members of the ad hoc, uh, present company speaking accepted. I don't want to congratulate myself, but do appreciate. I don't want to congratulate myself, but I do appreciate Commissioner Serbin, co-vice chairs Garcia and Katerina, some really outstanding work to get to this point. So thank you for that. We move on to item eight, a discussion of future agenda items. I did want to note, we've added this back on frankly, because we haven't had it in a little bit of time. And we wanted to just keep an eye out and give commissioners a chance to express interest in things they want to see us tackle. This is an informational item, no actions proposed. So before we turn to commissioners for input, comments, suggestions, let me ask Erin, any requests from the public on this item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any advance requests to speak on this item, but if any members of the public would like to address the commission, please press star nine or raise your virtual hand now and we will call on you. I'm not seeing any hands, Chair Bame. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll turn to commissioner comments and input. Commissioner Chen.
Quick questions. This, this topic has come up and I don't know if we've discussed it or if it's in our documentation somewhere, but I've been asked to volunteer on some political campaigns. My, my take is that it would look bad optics since we're an independent commission to be volunteering on partisan political campaigns. So I have declined, but do we have a commission, should we have a commission stance on that type of thing? That's, that's the, either future agenda item or a question for now.
It, it's actually, I think, a very good question and I'd invite council and staff to comment on it if they'd like, but I think it also reflects a deeper issue of overall political engagement. It's one thing to talk about it, to volunteer on a campaign. It's another thing to talk about a campaign publicly. It's another thing to give use on current political issues. And I could see a briefing on political activities or a presentation on that could be very useful. Let me ask councilor staff, do you have any comments on that? Okay, we'll take that.
If not, what I might suggest for a future agenda item to actually make a decision is perhaps we would take a a policy or whatever, a practice of our commission where we would all agree not to participate in partisan activities for the, you know, the time the commission is active.
Marguerite.
Hi there. Chair Bame, this is a really important topic. And I think it's something that we're, that you're going to want to discuss among yourselves. And it's not on the agenda for discussion at this point. And that's, I think, why neither Hillary or I are coming forward with any guidance from the commission law. But if you would like to put that on, we will certainly pull that together for you and have many resources. So I don't want you to view our silence as we don't, don't want to help you with this. We do. And if you want a future agenda item, we're there.
Terrific. I'll ask you and staff to have a talk about that. And in particular, I'd like for staff to make sure it's tracking with various ethics commitments and trainings that we've made, which I agree could use some clarification. So Commissioner Chen, thank you for that. Very valuable. Okay, Commissioner Serbin, then Commissioner Pons, then co-vice chair Katerina. Commissioner Serbin, please. Still on mute, I'm afraid.
Sorry. Okay. So the question of whether we ought to establish a policy as a commission on restricting, you know, our, our speech in any way, political speech, whatever. Maybe that might be appropriate for a committee like a, like, like an administrative governance committee that was mentioned earlier. That, that sounds like the kind of thing, the kind of question that type of committee might consider. So maybe there is some value in establishing that kind of committee because I, I think there are other questions with respect to the bylaws that a committee like that could also consider.
That's a good point and I'll ask commissioners to keep that in mind and please feel free to send thoughts to staff on that so that we can have as holistic and coherent an agenda as possible. So thank you for that. Commissioner Pons.
Yes, this is not an agenda item, but I just want to bring it up and it goes to the issue of time management. You know, we've had the luxury, and I'm going to use that term loosely, the luxury of focusing on the preliminary aspects of this process. At some point, the rubber is going to meet the road and we're going to have to start doing our business and that's going to be very time consuming. And this goes toward, goes to setting up the different committees to do the different work that possibly staff can do to free us up to do what we're here to do. You know, I don't understand the data and how that information is layered on to create the 2010 district map. I need to understand that totally before I can really understand how we change the 2020 map going forward. And that's going to take a lot of time for me, right? Because there are layers and layers and layers of data that creates that really simplified graphic that we look at and we say, wow, that looks so easy. But I can tell you, no, it's not. So I just want to make sure that we are very conscious and sensitive to time management. It is 8:27, right? And when you throw in doing our business, what the commission is here for, on to what we are doing now, this could stretch into a five-hour meeting and that would just be untenable. So as we continue to go forward, let's just think about time management because there are a few people doing a lot of work. And so we don't want to just put too much on them. So let's just keep that in mind. That's all. Thank you.
It's a great point and without extending the conversation too long, I actually had it in my notes that for our neck, one of our next two meetings, May 13th through May 27th, I really would like us to have a discussion as its own agenda item or linked to others about what our work looks like, what our work plan looks like between May and late July. Because once we get into late July, even with the contractors aboard, onboard, the data is going to start flowing in some way, shape or form. And as Commissioner Pons rightly put it, we have things to do that can be done now, especially public outreach. But the more we can do before we really start getting into some of those required missions, the better. And I promise you, when it comes to meeting our mandate, that's where I will start directing the agenda and the time limits of discussion a little more firmly to make sure we're doing what we have to do. I know we've had, I think Commissioner Pons put it right, the luxury of focusing on some issues that may not be right at the heart of the matter because we still don't have the data and we're coping with that. And I think we've done well from my perspective, but we are definitely going to have a time challenge on our hands. So please be thinking about concrete things you think the commission needs to do in the coming months before the data and frankly, the public engagement efforts really start to occupy the right amount of time that they should for us. So thank you for that. Co-vice chair Katerina.
And I'll be quick. I just want to make sure that as we move forward with our, with the budgeting recommendations, that we include the additional plans for additional committees or ad hoc committees, ad hoc committees such as the governance and bylaws and the point of contact discussion. So it's a little bit out of the purview of the budget group. I just want to make sure that going forward, we keep those, you know, in the back.
No, it's a good, it's a great point and I think reflecting some things other commissioners have said, service on ad hoc committees is another time commitment for commissioners. So how we balance all that is in our hands, but there is work to be done and priorities to be set. So thanks for that. Any other comments, ideas, questions? Very good. So with that, that, I think, concludes the business we have tonight. The next meeting, I just want to note, is three weeks away, Thursday, May 13th. That's not our usual two-week break because the regular meetings do fall on the second Thursday of the month. And if you look at the calendar, we adopted that is our next meeting, Thursday, May 13th. So those of you on ad hocs, you've got a little more time. Those of you not on ad hocs, I hope you've come away with plenty of other things to do. Please take advantage of all the training opportunities. Thank you for your time tonight. Thanks to the members of the public who joined us. Thanks for some very good work. It's a pleasure still to be working with all of you. Thank you. Good night. We're adjourned, I'm sorry, at 8:31.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.